Thank you, Seven President.
Thank you very much. So once again, we are doing our meeting by virtual teleconference only. At the back of the city council agenda, there are instructions on how to join the meeting by phone, computer, or by the Zoom meeting, and we suggest calling in or connecting online 15 minutes prior to the item you wish to speak on, and the city clerk and her team will help queue you up for speaking. Our first item is our standing item, an update and discussion of the COVID-19 health emergency and our city's response. I believe staff has a report to go through. Mr. City Manager, you want to take it away?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we've got quite a bit of material to go through. We'll do it briskly, but at the same time, we'd like to get us started off on the right tone, and we have a video to share that was put together by our Palo Alto Youth Council, and I think they've got a great message for the time. So with that, I ask the city clerk to play the video.
I stay home because I want to stop the spread of the coronavirus and protect members of my community.
I stay at home because I want to limit the spread of the virus and set an example for others to do their part in helping the community.
I stay at home to reduce the spread of the virus and to help our community, and so that our lives will go back to normal as soon as they can.
I stay home because social distancing is the most effective way to prevent the spread of the virus.
I stay home because I want to protect my community.
I stay at home because I value the safety and health of my family, friends, and community.
I stay at home for the benefit of my community and the welfare of high-risk individuals.
I stay at home because I care about the well-being of my grandmother.
I stay home to help limit the spread of the virus and help scientists have time to develop a cure.
I stay at home to protect my friends and family and other people who are vulnerable from getting sick.
Stay home to prevent our healthcare system from being overloaded.
I stay home to protect those with health problems from getting sick.
All right, thank you very much. Once again, nothing like a message from our future to set the tone for discussion of what's happening today. So with that, we've got a few things to cover with you this evening. We'll be getting our regular update from Ken Duker, our Director of the Office of Emergency Services, as well as hearing from our federal and state lobbyists, and perhaps we'll take a break at that point, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence and take questions, and then I'd like to proceed with providing an update to the council of what we've been doing organizationally. So with that, let me ask Mr. Duker to take the lead first. Great, keep looking at my screen here.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chicago. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council. It's good to be with you again virtually this evening. My comments will be brief. As you know, we've activated for more than a month now our Emergency Operations Center, the EOC. As part of that operation, as described in the last meeting, we have a number of staff. Well, every member of the EOC is also doing their so-called day job and regular work in addition, although some more than others. Some of our key objectives are to maintain our essential services, including public safety, public works, utilities, open space rangers, and other features that are essential business, both under the health order definition and our local definition. We're working now, as Mr. Chicago and other staff will describe, to adapt our workspace as an employer, as well as a city, to make sure that we are au courant and also actually ahead of the game with regard to the health order and emerging best practices. We are doing our best to anticipate likely outcomes, not only with the health order, but as you're going to hear a little bit later, with regard to our economic recovery and other contingency plans. I've said at prior meetings, it bears repeating, that unfortunately, we do not have the luxury of only concerning ourselves about the current pandemic. We are very soon going to be, for example, in fire season. We have ongoing risks to the community that have nothing to do with the pandemic, and sadly, we do not get a so-called hall pass about any of that. And finally, a key role of our Emergency Operations Center is to make sure, to the extent possible, if and when we become eligible for federal or state or other reimbursement, that we have done our appropriate due diligence and completed all necessary documentation. We'll bring that about. So in the interest of time, I'll leave my comments there, and I'll be available for further dialogue. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Next, let me turn to our federal and state lobbyists. Suggest they open up with a few comments. Give us a brief updates on what's happening in Washington DC and in Sacramento. And then again, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, perhaps open it up for questions and council discussion at that point, or we can continue with the presentation. First up, we have Steve Palmer, Vice President with Van Scoyack Associates, our Washington DC lobbyist, and he'll be followed by Nicolau De Luca, Senior Director of Northern California for Townsend Public Affairs in Sacramento. So with that, let me ask Steve to lead off.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Mayor, and members of our council. I'm happy to be here tonight. I don't know if you can see me or not, but hopefully you can. That what I'd like to do is just be able to cover where things have gone in Congress in the last month. It's pretty incredible. There have been three major bills passed to address the coronavirus public health crisis. And just to touch on them very, very briefly, okay, I'll start my video now, but there we go. And on the first bill on March 6th was $8 billion, which was primarily aimed at providing additional funds for healthcare resources. That was followed 12 days later by the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which was really aimed at providing emergency paid sick leave for the short term and family and medical leave extensions for the long term for employees that were affected with a payroll tax credit for private sector employees. It didn't unfortunately apply to public sector entities. And then at the end of March, the March 27th, the Coronavirus Aid at Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, was enacted by Congress and signed into law, and that was the $2.2 trillion bill that has created a lot of interest in terms of where the money is going and how the city can access that. As you know, the city so far has gotten a little less than $300 million from, or $300,000, I should say rather, from the Community Development Block Grant Program. The big pots of money were largely for, there was, that could be possibly sought after by the city is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was $150 billion fund that was created to allow large states and large government jurisdictions like counties and cities above $500,000 people to be able to get direct financial assistance for the work that they've been doing to address the public health safety, public health crisis. For example, San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, all will be able to access those funds. Unfortunately, the city cannot, and that's been an issue of concern that we've been trying to address, and I'll touch on that briefly in a moment. The portal for that just went live today. The guidance from the Treasury Department is coming out on the 24th of April, and the reason I mention that is because no one really knows exactly where that money can go. Can the counties suballocate some of that money to the city? Can the county use it for reimbursing expenses that the city has had? We don't know the answer to that yet, and we're waiting until April 24th to be able to get a secure answer, sure answer. The other program I'll just touch on briefly that was included in that was a $350 billion paycheck protection program, which was aimed at small businesses. It's loans for small businesses, primarily focused on preserving the salaries of the employees at those small businesses, as well as covering the expenses of the coronavirus activities. So these are, I mean, the $2.2 trillion, it sounds like an enormous amount of money, and obviously it is, but it was aimed at primarily preserving the workers and trying to preserve their salaries, and then, as I said in the earlier legislation, trying to help them in terms of family medical leave and sick leave. And what lies ahead very quickly, Congress, House and Senators are primarily, the Senator are debating whether or not they want to both, they both agree they want to add more money to the Payroll Protection Act, the Small Business Loan Program, $250 billion. That program, the Treasury Department has said runs out of money this, at the end of this week on Friday, so they'd like to be able to put back that additional money. And Senator Chuck Schumer, the Democratic Leader, as well as Speaker Pelosi have been advocating that in addition to that, they'd like to see another $150 billion provided to the, provided to state and local governments. And where that would affect the city is $53 billion of that would be channeled through the Community Development Block Grant Program through existing formulas, and some of that money would then obviously be made available to the city. There are also arguing about additional money through the SNAP program, the Food, the Nutritional Service Program, as well as more money for hospitals. Beyond that, I'll just say, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions at the right time, the next step, what lies ahead after that? Clearly, the government, the federal government knows they need to do more. The Congress is going to, is prepared to do more. There is some debate about how far they're willing to go, because some of the fiscal conservatives are saying they're spending too much money, but there's a real strong interest in an infrastructure bill being involved in what we call Phase Four legislation. We've had three pieces of legislation so far. This next one is just a minor adjustment, and Phase Four could be, is another significant investment. The House Democrats have proposed $760 billion in infrastructure investment, not just for transportation, but for broadband, for water distribution, for a number of different programs that the city would be eligible for as well. Now, lastly, advocacy, we've been very involved in working with Congresswoman Esch, who has been very, very, very supportive of trying to get more money for smaller communities like the city. Yeah, I say smaller, below the 500,000 population level where they, where the CARES Act was. We, the city, the mayor sent a letter yesterday to Congresswoman Esch, asking her to co-sponsor a bill that Colorado Congressman De Goose is sponsoring to, that would create $250 billion for local governments, state and local governments. And we've been working with the National League of Cities, as well as the Conference of Mayors, as they've been advocating to try to reduce that population level below the 500,000 to cities of 50,000 or more, all in an effort to try to make sure that the city of Palo Alto has access to some of those federal funds. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and Nicolau, and be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do you want to go to Nicolau or the council?
Yes, I'd suggest Nicolau provide a quick overview, since some of the issues overlap between DC and Sacramento, such that I think it'd be helpful to have both.
Understood.
Absolutely. So just ensuring you all can hear me, okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So Mayor, council members, and city manager and staff, Nicolau De Luca from Townsend Public Affairs, thank you for inviting me to video into this meeting. Quick update, similar to what Steve did, and happy to answer questions and also talk about what we're seeing going forward. So quick summary, March 16th, state legislature passed two COVID-19-related bills equalling $1.1 billion. So giving the governor the authority to spend up to $1.1 billion. They then recessed until April 13th. However, as you all know, that recess has now been pushed back to May 4th. So as of right now, May 4th is the date where the legislature is expected to come back to work into the Capitol. The governor has taken over 50 individual actions, has done over 20 executive orders. His communication has been very thorough, direct, to the point, and frequent. As you may know, every day at 12 o'clock, he does press conferences, updating everyone where things stand, and then we quickly send that information to the city. The, I'm not going to get into all the different executive orders unless you all would like me to. So that's what the governor is doing. He's got up to $1.1 billion to spend. He is updating everyone on what he's doing. The focus has been on PPEs. The focus has been on hospital beds. That's moving forward. Just recently, April 8th, he sent a letter to Speaker Pelosi and others requesting some support in the next phase of some of the legislature, legislation that Steve was talking about, specifically on housing homelessness and small business. So that's been a big push from the governor to get additional federal funds and then figure out how to spend that. The legislature coming back May 4th, this is going to be a very, very strange legislative year. Any of the deadlines we're used to, they've all been thrown out the window. As you might remember, this was actually this week and next week were supposed to be the final weeks for legislative committees, certain committee deadlines. That is gone. What we're hearing and nothing yet official is, when the legislature does come back, all their bill packages will be significantly reduced. So the top focus will be COVID. The second focus will be homeless-related. The third focus will be wildfires. With that said, I've talked to, we've definitely been reaching out and keeping our delegation, some of the members, the senator, up to date. Mayor, thank you very much for the letter that you signed, keeping them up to date as to what the city is doing, staying in touch, checking in with the Speaker's office, Pro Tem's office, and others. And the information that we're getting is the, at least on the Senate side, they're limiting their bill package to maybe two or three bills max. The Assembly, we've already talked to other Assembly offices, they're doing their reductions too. And when it comes to the budget, traditionally, so the Constitution says the budget has to be approved by the 15th, and that the legislative session has to end at the end of August. For the budget, keeping in mind that the income tax is not due until July 15th, what we expect them to do is adopt what they call a working budget, workload budget, which would be similar to last year. So all the discussions that the governor had in January about his proposals are going to be on hold to at least till next year. So the legislature adopts a workload budget, which is very simple, very status quo. July 15th, people, most people pay their income tax, so think about August 15th to the end of August will have a greater understanding of what the funding and the revenue is going to look like. So there will be budget trailer bills essentially, August, September. They very well could call it a special session going into October, November, possibly December. So what we know is the budget will be adopted. It'll be very simple framework. We'll know the numbers as they come in. And then when it relates to legislation, if it's not COVID or homeless-related, it's not going to move forward this year. But there are strong commitments to push other proposals for next year. We have been advocating to the governor and our delegation that the federal funding that is coming to the state, that we, Palo Alto, we get our share due to the fact that, yes, we are a city under half a million, but we still have many, many COVID-related expenses. So that's something that we're working on. We're beginning, and we continue to tell the story that with a drop of sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and other revenue sources, we need support. We're trying to fill that in too. And then I know that funding for special, for small businesses is also important. So really want to highlight three main proposals from the governor when it comes to small businesses. The first is a California Sales Tax Bridge Loan, and that's a deferral of sales use tax for businesses that up to $50,000, with less than $5 million in taxable assets. There's also the CDTFA 90-day tax extension, which, once requested, you can get a deferral when you pay your CDTFA taxes. And then the third is a California Small Business Loan Guarantee Program. Happy to email this to the city manager and staff to share with the council, and with that, I will happily answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you all very, very much. I'd just like to offer to my council colleagues, please hit the raise hand button if you'd like to ask either Steve or Nicolau a question or two. Vice Mayor DuBois and Councilmember Cormac.
Hi, guys. Steve and Nicolau, great to see you guys. This video thing works great. Maybe we could do this in the future with you guys. See if you guys are tripping.
Sounds good.
On the federal side, I wonder if there's anything being talked about around housing assistant vouchers? So this would be for existing low-income people in affordable housing. Right now, they can't be evicted, but they don't, they can't necessarily catch up on deferred rent payments in a lot of these affordable housing projects, obligations to investors that they need to make.
There is funding, a great deal of funding for housing programs in the CARES Act. I should say a great deal, but not as much as others. Unfortunately, I am not, I cannot see exactly where there might be something for vouchers, just a quick scan of it. So if I can, can I get back to you on that and just be able to provide the right answer?
Yeah, that would be great. And then Nicolau, thanks for going over the state budget process. That was one of my questions I had. It also sounds like you may be addressing my other concern, which, you know, I was going to ask if there could really be a moratorium on kind of nonessential bills, and particularly, we had so many new housing bills, but it sounds like the legislature's already decided to do that.
Yeah, and jumping on with regards to housing assistant vouchers, what I'm definitely hearing a lot of discussion on, on the state side, is hypothetically, a pool of funds for rental assistance. It's been acknowledged by, whether it's the big city mayors, mayors up and down, the state legislators, committee staff, what have you. Obviously, there's a homelessness issue going on in the state. No one wants it to grow, so there's definitely a lot of talk amongst housing advocates and others, local government, to push for some type of rental assistance, whether it's revolving loan program or some type of state fund for that. So I will definitely keep you all posted on where that's going. Right now, with a lot of what, with the legislature out, there's only so many executive orders the governor can do. Addressing some of your other points with regards to the bills, I have not seen anything like official with the Pro Tem stamp or the Speaker's stamp. I have seen memos that says, A, committee staff and others, we're going to have an expedited legislative process, so let's reduce a lot of our bills. Let's make sure it's only COVID-related, homelessness-related, or wildfire-related. So I do suspect a lot of the authors, for example, one of the senators that I spoke to today, she was knocking down her bill list from about 21 to, I think, two or three. And so I'll keep an eye on all the other housing bills. I've communicated a lot with Senate Governance and Finance Committee staff, as you know, they go through a lot of the housing bills. There was, earlier in the session, the desire to have some type of housing production bill. Right now, that's not their, their top focus. Top focus is COVID. My heart of hearts, I think there might be one or two housing bills this year, but I also assume that that would be pushed towards next year.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it will give us some time to kind of work with all the new ones from last year and the year before. You know, and I think particularly areas, you know, we're struggling with public transparency being online. You know, the other thing that's coming are the, are the RENA numbers and the housing allocation numbers. And it'll be interesting, and maybe you can talk to some of the folks, like, how is the impact of the virus being, taking into consideration? And, you know, how will cities be able to kind of weigh in before those numbers become official? They were on a pretty tight schedule before. Hopefully, that schedule is being pushed out a little bit, because that's something we're going to live with for next, you know, seven or eight years.
Yeah, I suspect that gets pushed back. There's been requests to push back a lot of different things, whether it's timeline for public records, whether it's when you submit a proposal for housing development. I have seen requests for delay the RENA numbers and when that, how that process moves. I've seen, I've also seen requests where, when municipalities receive state funding, and there's a certain timeline when your grant agreement that you have to complete the project by, there'll need to be extensions there. So when it comes to the budget process, whereas they're going to go back to a workload budget, I think there's going to be a lot of different cleanup language, and whether the trailer bills or others about timeline extensions, whether it's RENA, whether it's public records, what have you. So definitely see that being worked on when we get back to whatever getting back to will look like.
Yeah, and then finally, I love my colleagues jumped in, you know, we've already been talking and struggling a little bit with, you know, how can we support our local community-serving businesses, local retailers, local retail-like services, you know, and I'm sure every city is having this fear that a lot of those businesses have been here for a long time, and once they close, it's going to take a long time for somebody new to kind of move in and maybe restart that kind of business. So we're definitely feeling some urgency and, you know, keeping a surprise with the status, can help, how the state can help, you know, be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Mr. Palmer, good evening. This is, you know, you'll probably glad you're at the beginning of our agenda and not at the end, given the time difference.
Thank you very much.
Two questions for you. The first is, I was intrigued by your description of the guidance coming out on April 24th. And the question I had appears to be the answer, you have sub-allocation. What is it that we could or should do in this short timeframe between now and then to encourage that as an option and/or work with our own county?
So I think, Councilmember, your last point is the key one, and that is to work directly with the county. It's not clear that the county has to sub-allocate. It's not clear that they can sub-allocate. I know that there, some of your fellow cities in California are reaching out to their counties directly to ask for funding and put pressure on them to give them a share of that funding. I'm not, I'm not trying to, in any way undermine Santa Clara County, but I do think, on behalf of the city, that I would appeal directly to the County Board of Supervisors and make sure they understand the needs of the city.
Great, thank you. I'm confident that our mayor and city manager, who have been Johnny-on-the-spot with those letters, will get one out soon. And then the second question has to, with the CDBG funds, you suggested it's possible we could end up with more of those. Would those, would those likely come with the same restrictions that we have now about what they can use for?
No, that's a great question. No, they're, the HUD is granting enormous flexibility on terms of these coronavirus CDBG funds. So there is not the same restrictions that you have under the normal allocation. You can use this, use the new funds with a lot more flexibility for whatever needs you have.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And then Mr. De Luca, thank you for going over the homelessness. That was my main question I had about how things will proceed in terms of what's going on at the state level with respect to us, and you've probably never been this busy when the legislature has been in recess.
Well said. My four-year-old son the other day told me I'm always on the phone.
All right. Thanks so much, Mayor. Back over to you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, I see Councilmember Pooh. Lydia, we're having a hard time hearing you. You may need to put the mic closer.
I just want to say thank you for, to both Mr. De Luca and Mr. Palmer for being here. Is this better?
Ooh, a lot better.
Okay, thank you. So for Mr. De Luca, I wanted to say, you know, on the homeless, the funding that, or the legislation that the state is going to be looking at, focus on homeless, can we be sure that, you know, there's different category of homelessness? There's folks who have mental issues and who need, you know, hospitalization, et cetera. Can we make sure that the legislature is kind of paying attention to that? So, you know, we don't put everybody with different issues into one location. So we're actually not treat, they won't be actually treated then for what they have. Instead, they'll just be, you know, sheltering in place at a facility. So I hope that, you know, when they're looking at this, they can look at it within the categories. I can't see you, sorry.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then the other part is, I see in the budget committees, the Assembly Committee on Budget, their letter that they had sent out, it says that the Assembly will defer all deliberation on special fund programs, such as the greenhouse gas reduction funds, until June 15th. Does Palo Alto get these funds?
That is a good question. I don't know.
Okay, because if we do, then we kind of have to make sure that we put that, make sure we make that request and put the application. So if city manager can make sure that we get that. So if city manager can make sure that we get that. I think Tom has already asked the questions on RENA and Plan Bay Area, and hopefully they will push that back because there's less transparency now. But otherwise, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Any other of my colleagues? Just raise your hand. I don't see anyone. So I'll just jump in quickly. I want to thank you both for joining us. Really appreciate your work on our behalf, especially in these difficult times.
Adrian, sorry, Liz and Eric were raising their hand. I don't know if you saw that.
Okay. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thank you, yeah, just briefly. On the PPP, the Paycheck Protection stuff, either of you folks got any visibility on when people think that banks are gonna be up engaged and working on that?
It's a really good question. Any visibility or information?
Yeah, that.
Okay, Councilmember, it's a great question, because the Treasury Department's guidance on that program didn't come out until Thursday night, last Thursday, and then Friday, the banks went live. And as you probably read, they ran into a lot of problems because the banks didn't understand exactly what they were supposed to be doing. The last I heard was on Friday night, they'd given out $90 billion worth of loans. And they anticipate, Treasury Department anticipates that they're gonna run out of money on Friday. That $350 billion, $49 billion will all be used up by Friday, which is why they're pushing to get another $250 billion approved by Congress for the Paycheck Protection Program. So I think it's, it's proving to be something that small business originally was slow in trying to get at. And I think a lot of the really small businesses, you know, the mom-and-pop and individual companies, didn't quite have the ability to gain access as quickly as some of the larger small businesses. I don't know how you quantify that, but I do, I do think people are now becoming more, Treasury is opening the door up to some of the, you know, one in two individuals, small businesses, and they're getting access to some of that money.
Yeah, I, I think there's a significant number that are sort of going, well, we applied, we have no idea. Did they get our application? Are we gonna get anything? When?
Yeah, yeah. I think you're right. I've heard that as well. I do know, the other thing I had heard, the reason I tried to differentiate between the two was the small businesses that apparently had relationships with like Bank of America or Wells Fargo. You know, the big banks were the ones that were getting the loans right away, and the ones that didn't, you know, let's say they didn't have that kind of line of credit, they were the ones that were suffering a little bit longer wait.
Thanks.
Councilmember Niss.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes.
So looking at Nick, I think, or, or maybe Steve, I'm not sure which one of you. The county is responsible for the healthcare in our county. It's responsible for the homeless. It's responsible for any number of other issues that involves healthy people in our county. But I know that they will be resisting this because they too have new needs that they didn't have before. What do you suggest our role is in that, other than writing nice letters?
Well, my suggestions are a couple of things. When it comes to the homeless funding, in years past, it's gone into three buckets. The big cities, top 13 populated cities, the counties, and then the COCs, Continuums of Care. My thoughts would be twofold. One, as a city, if this is what the city decides, we work with our delegation to get some carve-out language that says either cities can be, if they want, to be a recipient of some of those funds. If that's something that we could discuss later, if that's a, on the, if that's something the city wants to do. Second would be to start working with the county now about what your needs are. So they're either gonna address them or help you as a sub-grantee get some of those funds. And so those are kind of the two ways that I see it. But I do suspect that similar to years past, when it comes to the homeless funding, they'll use the same formula, which is direct allocation to the 13 big cities, direct allocation to counties, and direct allocation to the Continuums of Care. I see you smiling, so.
It doesn't include us.
Yeah, well, if there's something, this is definitely something that we can work on. I know some cities that aren't the Big 13, some would like to see some of the funds, or some would like to see the money go to the counties and pass down to the cities a lot faster. I think one thing that's been crystal, well, many things have been clear from the COVID-19 response, but part of it is it's time, time, and more time. I've heard municipalities up and down throughout the Bay Area, they need those funds right away. You can't wait for money from your county if you gotta put up a porta potty or a hand washing station or what have you. So I think that's definitely something that we could seize on and help either make it our main ask or work with others to help make that ask, that we get those, those funds as fast as humanly possible.
So the city's association is talking about it, our 15 cities, because they know how frustrating it's been in the past. So anything you can do to help us with this would really make a difference. It is tough to get money out of the county.
And Councilmember, if I may, that's the reason, hi, Councilmember, how are you? One of the, it's, it's the reason I mentioned the $53 billion of community, community development block grant funds that Congress, the Congressional Democrats are advocating for right now. Because that's a huge amount of money, and as I mentioned, Councilmember Cormac, they're, it's very flexible in terms of how it can be used. I mean, to give you the size of the magnitude, the city was able to get about $295,000 out of a $2 billion pot of CDBG money. Imagine if there was $53 billion, and 70% of that was directly allocated to cities like Palo Alto. So you'd have a huge amount of money that was available to the city, and that's why we've been trying to advocate for that, right? And the mayor was kind enough to send a letter to NASU, asking her to co-sponsor and advocate for Congressman DeGoose's $250 billion bill. So, so we're trying to, we're trying to push for more money, because the money that was in the CARES Act, it's hard to believe that you could say $2.2 trillion, but there's a lot of fighting going on over that $150 billion that was made available for state governments, and it is gonna be hard to get some of that.
Yes, it is. They really hang on to it tightly, and we've pleaded many times in the past with the county with, to almost no avail. So it's gonna take some real effort on our part and probably some calls to our elected officials as well.
Great.
Thanks, Adrian.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you so much for giving us the update and lobbying our behalf. I really appreciate it. So I heard that the PPP program, the Paycheck Protection Program, when you actually look at the number of small businesses in the country, only works out to be about $12,000 per business. Now, that means some businesses are gonna get some, and some businesses aren't gonna get some, so that's good to hear that more money is on the way, because $12,000 per, for small, even for small businesses, not a lot of money. My, my hard question for you guys, and I realize you are not about to give anything definitive, because things are still up in the air. But given what you know about us, and given what you know about the programs coming down from the federal level, from the state, et cetera, what do you think is a dollar amount that we might be able to get from these different entities? What do you, what do you think we could expect? Are we, are we looking, I mean, and right now, even in order of magnitude, it's gonna be like $1 million, is it gonna be $10 million, $100 million? You know?
So Nicola, I'll go ahead and, I'll start, Councilmember, and I'll turn it over to you next. I, I'm gonna totally punt on this, and I know it's not a satisfactory answer, but the, you're right. The Senate Republicans and the president have said we need $250 billion more for the Paycheck Protection Program. There's no sense that they're gonna agree, though, to more money for state and local governments. There have been a number of conservative senators who have said, why do I wanna raise federal taxes to pay, to reimburse them for state, for local taxes? So it's, it's, it's a challenge, and one of the reasons we're fighting so hard for this additional money that I was talking about, the $53 billion in CDBG, is that that is the first opportunity that Congress, anyone has put on the table in terms of providing additional money for smaller cities and communities like Palo Alto. Short answer, I guess, is, you know, again, in order of magnitude, that's why I brought it up. If, if the city got $300,000 out of a $2 billion pot of money, and there was roughly $35 billion in direct allocation, that would be a significant increase in funding for the city. But we just don't know if it's gonna, if it's gonna be included in this bill or the next bill, and, you know, how long this continues on.
Let's, let's say it was. So how much would that be for us in terms of rough, you know, swag of the nest? Because I realize we don't know now, because nothing's been approved, and there's a lot more battles to be fought. But I'm just trying, because, because, you know, we're going to our budget cycle right now, trying to figure out, you know, what is our revenue gonna be? And it'd be good to know, even as a placeholder, what we could expect. If, if it's just 250, then okay, that's good to know, right? Or if we think we count on a million or 10 million or something, that's also good to know.
And, and I gotta tell you, Councilmember, knowing that you're talking about your city's budget, I wouldn't begin to try to answer that question, because it's impossible to be able to tell you with any certainty. I mean, I know, like I said, I was shocked, and I never would have been able to tell you that Congress could pass three bills in one month that totaled well over $2.2 trillion. But, you know, it, there's no, there is no, so far, as you saw, there's very little money in that for local governments. And there's, there's no strong feeling across the board that local governments should get more than they are, have already gotten. So I can't tell you for sure that, if you're talking about your budget, I would not talk about any more than you have already.
So we shouldn't, we shouldn't count on getting additional federal or state dollars at this point in time. We should just factor in what we know and what we have.
I'll defer to Nicola on the state funding, but in terms of federal funding, I think, in terms of, I, I would always be much more cautious than I would be expansive about something like that. Obviously, if you get more money, it's a windfall, but in terms of budgeting, I would not want to go beyond what you already know you're gonna go.
Not, not what we wanna hear, but that's the truth, and that's where it is. It is what it is.
And I would just agree with Steve. I think he, he laid it out well. And from the state side, I mean, we still don't know the magnitude of what the deficit is facing the state. And from everyone I've talked to, that obviously the state's gonna have to backfill all their loss, just like the counties will, just like cities will. But what I do recommend strongly for Palo Alto is just what is our specific Palo Alto story? How many hotels are closed because of COVID? What does that normally mean to the general fund? How many small businesses have shut their doors? What's that revenue looking like? What did sales tax used to be, and now what is sales tax like? And so we really have to make our story clear as to why specifically we need funding. But from the state side, it is still very much undetermined until we know exactly the magnitude of everything, until we know the magnitude of the complete loss of revenue.
Well, thank you for trying. So I guess right now, we'll just count zero for now, until you guys are able to find out more. Thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Great, so, so thank you, everyone. Thank my colleagues for their questions. I guess one kind of stepping back is, and Nicola, you just touched on this in terms of like what Palo Alto's story is, but how, how do we position ourselves more effectively for things that could be coming down, down the pike? And then Steve, at, at the federal level, like, do you have any estimate of like how many rounds of these like hundreds of billions or trillion-dollar packages are going to be created? I mean, is anyone?
Mayor, I've seen Nicola reaching for something. I'll jump in first. I think if anybody could tell us how long the health crisis would last, we'd have a better answer. I don't think we do.
And then how do you think the city can potentially position itself, whether it's like CDBG funds or some of the affordable housing funds my colleagues mentioned, in storytelling?
Well, I, I, you know, Nicola's right in terms of the transient hotel tax, the loss, the losses of the revenue. But I also think too, not just talking about revenue loss, because that, that is falling on deaf ears, like I tried to say earlier. In Washington, there's not a lot of support for trying to raise taxes federally to pay for local taxes lost. But there is an interest in trying to support local governments that are having to fight the COVID-19 epidemic. So I think focusing on what the city's doing, focusing on the cost of the city, focusing on how you're helping your residents, I think those are the things that carry a lot more weight than just sort of saying we've lost out.
That helps, thank you.
And Mayor, I would chime in. Sorry, my son wanted me to open a little soda for him. Definitely telling our story, but also how things have been moving, like all the, something that we've been doing for the city for the last few years, it's telling your story when it relates to housing. All the different changes the city's made in some of your zoning ordinances, all the different things that the city's been doing to get more, entice more housing production going. So we talked about everything that we've been doing, and now like where were we right before COVID happened? What certain projects could be at risk? What does that mean? But also telling it in a regional, with a regional story too, not just Palo Alto, but what's going on in the peninsula and why we're an important part of that. And so we've been briefing with your letter and all the updates, Speaker's Office, Pro Tem's office, and the various policy committee staff. We're gonna keep doing that, as many people as we can keep talking to, telling our story. And then the moment that the funding, when the green light goes on for the funding, we just have to pounce.
Thanks, okay, thank you very much. Councilmembers Phil Seth and Niss, I see, I see both your lights. I just want to remind us, we are coming up on an hour, and this is only the first part of our discussion on the COVID thing. So if there are very brief questions, Councilmember Phil Seth and Niss, but let's keep them brief.
Thanks, sorry, really brief. I think everybody knows that California's revenue model is extremely precarious in general. One of the big outstanding risks is that if there's a massive recession, you've got these giant potential liabilities that suddenly become a lot more serious. Anybody talking about that yet?
I'm not hearing it as much, but I'm, I'm sure it could very well be being discussed right now.
I, I expect it's probably pretty early. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Niss.
I don't have anything, sorry.
Oh, I saw you raising your hand.
No, I, it's because Nellie's continuing to help me make this thing work properly tonight. Sorry.
All right. Well, I want to thank both you gentlemen. I'll just note to my colleagues, you know, this is an ongoing thing, and we can certainly write Stephen and Nicola in the future via email or host another session like this. But I would like to move us on to the rest of the update for this item. So gentlemen, thank you both. Really appreciate your time tonight. We're all.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chikata, back to you.
All right, let's see if I can get this to work. You seeing my slide again?
Yep, we're on the federal and state legislative slide.
Very good. Okay, we wanna move off of that and turn it back to home. So I think that where we ended in terms of how best to tell the city's story is a good place to pick up. And, and our story really is in terms of the services that we've continued to provide to the community and a series of actions, as Mr. Duker got us started, talking about what we've done in direct response to the emergency that we find ourselves in. But that said, let me do, and I'll do this really quickly, so apologize if I'm skimming over some things, but like to give you an opportunity for any questions you might have. And talk about really the parallel organization, once again, we talked about this last time, that we've now established two organizations. One, the city, the normal city, and the other being the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, that we had an org chart of last time. And really focusing on, on a number of strategies. But in terms of some major themes, let me start off just noting that we've redeployed a number of staff from their normal duties to our state of emergency priorities, both directly on the Emergency Operations Center and a few areas that I'll mention in a moment. We've realigned our workforce duties to reflect the remote work, the same way we're doing this meeting here tonight. We are doing training on standing-up commission meetings and the like, and community engagement, as you'll hear about shortly. While at the same time, recognizing that there have been challenges that every individual has faced, ranging from individual issues to family responsibilities for childcare and homeschooling. One of the key strategies that we've embarked on is this rotation of week-on, week-off duties for a number of our functions, in particular, public works and utilities, where that has been an important approach to maximize the distance, so to speak, between our crews and allow a minimizing, the mixing of individuals on a day-to-day basis, to instead do it on a week-to-week basis in order to, you know, just minimize the number of contacts with new people that are happening on a day-to-day basis. Next, we're really accelerating our community recovery efforts, and again, I'll speak to that, and as well as using the time to catch up on some administrative work. And then finally, on the topic of administrative leave, do you want to note, as I did last week, that we've now ramped up our administrative requirements for actual use of administrative leave? Just to give you a quick sampling, let me just note a few examples of the areas that individual departments have undertaken and will be focused on over the course of the next few weeks. Again, this is just a sampling. Um, again, this is just a sampling, so certainly invite the council to ask questions about any individual department if you'd like to in a moment. Uh, first, in terms of administrative services, in addition to uh processing payments and now uh it's a significant number of refunds uh as uh we've been talking about the monetary transactions. Really key that ASD has been our frontline and preparing us for the record keeping necessary for the Federal Emergency Management Administration's uh record keeping requirements. Should the opportunity present itself for any reimbursement through FEMA. Terms of community services, uh just want to highlight the um implementation of a number of virtual programming uh offerings both currently as well as really looking forward to a period of recovery. Uh, what those uh programs could look like, both in person with uh social distancing as well as uh additional uh virtual programming. And then one that's not noted here in particular, but uh redeployment of staff that had been working on community center facilities uh in, in particular custodial uh facilities, custodial duties uh to now working on the other essential facilities that do have our uh public safety uh personnel requiring additional uh uh more frequent uh cleanings in order to maintain hygiene. And then finally, in terms of our fire, uh certainly first responders, uh but now as our inspectors don't have as many uh development permits and develop construction ongoing, they're turning their attention to being prepared for the upcoming wildland fire season. So important function uh that uh we're now uh making contacts uh into the, into the hillside residents in order to get prepared for that next threat. Terms of in information technology, perhaps not widely uh assumed, uh but these are folks that uh have a very high-touch jobs. And as it relates to providing support uh to, on an ongoing basis to our other employees, both working in City Hall or working remotely to provide technical support and uh again, lots of high-touch literally in terms of keyboards, equipments and the like. Uh, and so their own uh PPE requirements has been uh an, an important area of focus. Library staff uh really uh took the lead in both the standing up of our call center as well as ongoing uh operation of the call center, including uh researching and providing uh support to our ongoing communications to the community. Planning and Development Services uh has uh ongoing uh efforts on uh processing application, which is applications which have continued as well as uh soon to be rolling out of online plan review, which is really something that has been awaited for years. Uh, that we're uh now really being able to focus on, on getting that up and running. And then finally, just note for public works and utilities, I mentioned earlier, the implementation and the adjustment of our work schedules and uh crew schedule to reflect both physical separation of the work shifts as well as the focus on essential duties. Again, just something of the activities uh that our departments are working on. And then just uh in terms of a few statistics, want to share with you, um, the first we touched on last week uh in terms of overall allocations that roughly half of our uh our personnel or overall employee uh workforce is now working from home. A little less than half uh have been designated as essential to report to onsite duties, certainly public um uh public safety, uh as well as our essential utilities and essential infrastructure work and uh about 5% uh representing either administrative leave, sick leave of one uh form of leave or another. And then drilling down on the administrative leave in particular, based on our first uh pay period. And these numbers are not exactly a subset of the 5% that's above because there is overlap. Um, but let me just uh note them quickly in terms of the breakdown among uh departments. I wasn't, I would note that among our uh community services uh department, as you see, at 31% and library at 13%, that a majority of the um uh administrative leave usage within those two departments uh were for part-time and hourly employees that were unable to remote work and unable to uh telework. Uh, because uh they were not, had not to that point, has been assigned city laptops or VPN access. And so really during this first pay period, our focus had been on standing up the call center, getting that uh put together as well as establishing telework for the full-time employees that um uh were obviously, and for good reason, are focused in that first uh pay period. So now, as we're looking forward, the additional uh support from IT and through the departments is focused on getting additional equipment out to the uh workers that were not able to get that in that first uh pay period. And then uh finally, just note on that note uh at the bottom of the slide, that about 50% of the admin leave hours were directed by management to support social distancing. That, that really does uh relate specifically to the public works utilities. And to a certain extent, police shifts as well uh to reflect our transition and the move to the week-to-week with on and off shifts or as applicable in other parts of the operation. And then just looking forward uh to the budget process, as we had talked previously, our efforts to this point have really been on uh getting through the emergency period. And then unfortunately, we're not going to have a moment to breathe in that as of next week, next Monday, we'll start our discussion of the upcoming fiscal year budget. I will be presenting to you and simply transmitting to you uh the proposed budget, which we've talked about previously, but also provide a preview of some of the fiscal considerations. Clearly, uh pretty drastic uh issues uh that will need to be discussed, including uh potentially labor negotiations uh that will be uh starting that discussion next week. Over the course of the remainder of the month of April and into May, the Finance Committee will be uh considering our utility rates. During the month of May, uh the budget uh will be discussed by the council as a whole, uh per your direction last week. And uh discussion of specific strategies to be considered uh for this new fiscal year budget. And then June 23rd, it's actually June 22nd, thanks for correction to the city, uh from the city clerk, that uh the 22nd is a Monday of that week where we would be bringing forward uh the budget, the council's uh consideration and then really um right around the corner uh to be starting our new fiscal year, July 1st. And then I just briefly want to touch on uh this slide uh that had been previously uh discussed last week uh that the city is providing and focused on business support on a number of fronts uh ranging from our, our call center and being able to respond to questions from businesses uh to extended payments and uh permit expansion, extensions as well. So just touch on that briefly, but uh also to speak to the direction we received from the city council last week where uh the council expressed the interest in developing some options uh for additional uh support uh for small businesses. So our work is well underway now on two fronts. One, uh the direct uh small business financial support and to develop some options. Uh, we've been in touch with City Mountview, as was been, as was discussed last week, as well as uh looking at other options and some logistics as to what uh direct financial support uh could consist of. And the second related to the uh uh Business Roundtable that was discussed to really look both near term as well as longer term and our recovery strategy, recognizing that we will take both immediate actions as well as those that may take a little longer to implement. Uh, that we're working on putting together a work plan uh that will bring that back uh for council and quick action in order to do some outreach on a broad spectrum of our uh business uh community. And then just to come back to a recognition of both uh dealing with the emergency as well as what it will take to move beyond the emergency. You saw this, actually a version of this Emergency Operations Center organization chart uh before. Now, uh I think our EOC staff has had the opportunity to color it up a bit. Uh, but I would just like to focus on uh John Late, who uh is, as you know, our planning director by day, but now uh night job taking on uh an increasing uh role on leading our recovery branch. I think this is to the extent that the uh org chart were a living document, you will see that climbing up in terms of both focus and uh level of activity in our recovery branch over the next few weeks. And then finally, I just wanted to note for anyone who's not caught any of our prior uh briefings that we have multiple channels uh through which uh members of the public can stay informed and be engaged with our ongoing communications, with our key messages uh that uh we would like to reiterate uh that we are doing what we can to stay at home uh and bend the curve uh as uh has been uh reported. Some progress in that note and uh we would like to continue that uh that we're doing what we can at the city level to support our residents and the community staying together uh in terms of uh connecting uh with neighbors and uh providing volunteer efforts. And then finally, that we are truly in this together. That will continue over the course of the next uh several weeks as we maintain our ongoing focus on emergency services. We're continuing to maintain connections uh through our community-based organizations and increasingly, as uh has been presented, our business efforts and recovery as an increasing focus of our attention. And then finally, just note that the council will be busy, uh not that you aren't already busy over the course of uh the remainder of April, May and June uh with, I, I know this is probably difficult for folks to read. Uh, but in April, uh already mentioned the transmittal of the budget document overall and the uh Finance Committee starting to talk about uh a few of our utility rates and, and a number of our business activities uh kicking up. Then in May, uh those budget deliver deliberations will continue with the Finance Committee also taking up other utilities and utility rates. And then in June, coming back uh with the uh both the proposed budget for adoption, recognizing um perhaps not unlike what's uh happening in Sacramento, that it will need to be a living document as uh we recognize that a number of issues will be playing out concurrently in terms of the economy. And uh we'll also, over the course of the next couple of months, uh hopefully have a very specific plan moving forward to support uh both the support for our small business community as well as a longer-term strategies as it relates to recovery and long-term resilience uh for a community. So with that, uh that concludes our presentation. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it back to you for any council discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chikata. Um, so my colleagues, please just raise your hands in the, in the Zoom meeting and I'll get to you. Uh, council member Ness and then Tanaka. You're, you're muted, Liz.
So yeah, listening to all that you have said, um, did I hear you say something about working with some of the other cities on this, or did I, did I mishear you?
Well, actually, I'm not sure I hit that um specifically, but I am. And we are working with our uh neighboring cities uh both on regular check-ins in terms of what's going on among uh the different cities as well as really um to your point earlier in terms of working with the county, uh making sure that we're um working collectively with the county, recognizing uh that we have some common interests and uh making sure that we're in sync on what those are and, and our advocacy there.
So I talked with one of the mayors today from another city and their hope is that there can be strength in numbers, knowing how difficult it can be to extract funds from the county. So I hope that's something that we'll think about. Um, one more thing is you go to put your budget together, which is going to be a very trying year to do that. Are you thinking that we'll have something permanent by June or is that too soon? Or are you maybe looking ahead to September for a finale already? Any thoughts on that yet?
Um, well, I think we're definitely expecting it to require a lot of flexibility. And so we'll know some things um by June and I will know more uh the further uh down the, the calendar we get. So I expect that we'll want to uh bring to the council some building blocks, some things that, that the council may feel are um logical to proceed with right away and some things that may take a little longer time to play out. So I think we'll, we'll bring you a range of options.
Well, we wish you all luck with that. That's going to be a, a really difficult one and um at the Cities Association the other night, they said the same. Everyone is concerned about trying to put a budget in place by June and knows that it'll be very difficult. So we'll be supporting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Uh, council member Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Um, last week, we talked about um relief for utility bills for um for businesses. And I think it was Molly or you or someone mentioned that there's actually a program already in place on residential. Um, and I think you guys said you were going to have some permission on it this week. Um, and so I, I talked a little bit about it, but I didn't hear much about that, that you guys said you would talk about this week. Like, can you? Is this something you guys can afford to us or I, do you guys want to talk about now or what's, what's?
Sure, sure. Let me, let me lead off and perhaps either Megan or Dean Bachelor would like to expand, but uh actually wasn't part of this presentation because I think we saturated the communication uh channels over the last or the, the prior week. Um, so yes, we are uh providing uh deferral of payments on uh the commercial utilities as well as residential, so it applies to both. And those were pushed out uh as to your point, we had the discussion last Monday and I think it was uh no later than Wednesday that we really saturated uh, tried to make sure that uh oh, anyone who was interested in the topic knows that that uh that relief is available. So with that, um Dean or uh Megan, like to chime in? Or? Yes, looks like Megan's unmuted. Oh, there you are.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, last week we posted information on our website about both the residential and commercial um utility programs available. And we also shared it multiple times in our e-blast last week, um twice to be uh clear, related to both commercial and what's available for our residential um customers. And we also shared it through our social media channels.
So is it just deferrals or also forgiveness?
Well, um, well, let's go ahead and let Dean reply.
Oh, Councilmember Tanaka, this is Dean Bachelor. So at this period of time, all it is right now is that we're um it is not um to look at forgiveness at this period of time. We are just um leaving the bill open at this point, whatever the resident or the small business can pay. Then at that point, uh we're taking those payments. And then at that point, we'll look into what those um funds that they'll owe us and then we'll make some determinations on what we can do further.
Let me, let me add, Dean, when you're ready.
Go ahead, Ed.
Okay, yeah, I'd also like to add a couple of things. Um, one, uh just point of information uh so that uh the public's aware that our utilities are run as enterprises and it's not, or it certainly is a situation in which uh we have to encapsulate both the, encapsulate both the revenues and the expenditures. So any relief, any actual um can't remember what term you used, the forgiveness, would need to come basically at the cost of other ratepayers. And so that's uh, you know, obviously a difficult issue. It's un, unlike a, a private enterprise. So that's one note. The other is to recognize that the UAC, the Utility Advisory Commission, as well as the Council Finance Committee will be reviewing the rates, proposed rates uh for the upcoming year over the course of the next few weeks. And uh in recognition of the state of emergencies, staff has put together uh modified uh proposals for consideration that would have zero increases uh for the upcoming year.
Uh, because uh I think uh the Mountview program actually had as part of its program to have deferrals for residents and businesses. And that was our topic last year. I mean, not, not this uh deferrals, but uh forgiveness, which was the topic of last week. And that's why I'm asking about it because I know that I've been talking to a few people um over the past week and, you know, people are saying that it's great that you defer it, but you know, we're living month to month or we're surviving month to month. And so if we still have to pay six months with the utility bills, we, we still make us go bankrupt. So I think there's a lot of people really hurting out there. And, and so um I think as you guys explore the Mountview program more or other programs, I think it's really key to keep this in mind because you want to bankrupt some people.
Understood.
Okay. Um, second uh topic is um is right now we charge although it's a minor amount of money, I think it's like 25 cents or 50 cents, I don't actually remember, for a paper bag at grocery markets. So if you, if you have to buy a paper bag, um in the past, and I think the reason why we did it was because we wanted people to bring the reusable um bags to the supermarket. But now because of, of all the COVID-19 thing, you can't do that anymore. So basically what you're doing is you're, you're basically increasing the cost of groceries for people. Um, and so, you know, uh it's not a lot of money, but I'm just curious to know, is this something the city is actively enforcing? Or if let's say some grocery stores decide that, hey, you know, given that customers don't, no longer have the option of bringing in the, their own grocery bag. don't, no longer have the option of bringing in their own grocery bag, you know, maybe for now, the city is not going to aggressively try to enforce the paper bag collection fee? Just because I think the purpose of it wasn't necessarily revenue generating thing, it was more about, was more of a encouraging people to bring their own reusable bag.
Right. Let me ask Brett Eggleston to respond on behalf of staff. I'm, well, in particular, on the issue of enforcement. To your point, Councilmember, it's not a big dollar amount, and in fact, none of that money comes to the city. But that said, Brad, why don't you speak to how that works?
Sure. Good evening, Council. Councilmember Tanaka. Yeah, Ed is right, we're not actively enforcing this. And you're correct that when the ordinance was first adopted, the purpose for it really was to have people pay the costs for the bags that the stores were already incurring, but had been giving away for free. So that's been in effect for a while. But that's correct, we're not actively enforcing it this time.
Okay, great. That makes sense, thank you. And I think you guys mentioned multiple times that you're not actively enforcing parking, unless someone calls in about a problem, correct?
Correct. We're not enforcing any of the time-limited restrictions. And so I know that the police department's focused on safety-related parking issues.
Because I spoke with a few people over the week about, I guess there's like an RV, or maybe RVs parked in Green Meadow, and it's been parked there for, I don't know, six months or some long period of time. And people have been calling in about it, and staff hasn't responded. So I was just wondering, is there any update on that? Or what's the story about that?
Sure, let me ask our Police Chief, Bob Johnson, to chime in if he can.
Yeah. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. Yeah, we addressed this earlier on a city conference call with some of the stakeholders, and we've been proactively responding when we get these complaints. Complaints are drastically down. We're familiar with the Green Meadows complaints, and that's something we're just starting up. Again, is to actually go out, look at the RVs, where they're parked and everything else. So we are responding, and we actually did a count over the weekend, and it's about a 50% reduction, especially on El Camino, as far as the RVs in the area. But we will continue to respond if somebody calls in with a complaint.
Okay, that's great to hear, because the people told me that they called in a bunch of times, and basically nothing happened. So I was curious. So thank you for your work on this.
And I believe it's 3292413, the police non-emergency number that we're now really funneling, issues associated with shelter in place or essential businesses. So I certainly want to reinforce the ability for people to call in those issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Mayor Fine, thank you, Mr. Chikata, and all of the staff who just pops in and out as we need them. It's kind of amazing. Specifically, I want to comment on the utilities crews taking a week on and off. Thank you for sharing that information and helping us all understand one of the reasons we might be doing this. I know that other utilities are doing similar things, so appreciate understanding more of that. As a matter of fact, I was able to use that as an explanation to someone earlier today who was asking some questions about item 3A will be discussed, which will come up later. One thing we haven't discussed, starting to think about, is the role of childcare in our recovery. So it's not a small business, so we haven't heard too many people talk about it. But as people do go back to work, I mean, talk about an essential nonprofit, and I don't expect an answer this evening, but I assume we're already working with Pellet of Community Childcare, but there's also the Children's Preschool Center, and so many private ones, but they are all nonprofits, so they'll be unlikely to benefit from these many plans we've been talking about. So if you have an update, great, but otherwise, maybe something for us to learn more about next week, to be sure that we're thinking about that as we get into recovery. Summer camps, Community Service Department, we haven't talked about that at all, and yet we're in that stage. Is there anything, Mr. Chikata or Director O'Kane, that you want to share with the community about our beloved summer camps?
Thank you for that opening. Let me invite Kristin to speak to both that, as well as the childcare issue, given that Kristin and Minka Van Der Swaak have been maintaining ongoing communication with our nonprofit partners.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Fine. So first, tackling the childcare piece. Like Ed said, Minka and I are still meeting with the nonprofit providers regularly. We're also coordinating with a lot of the childcare providers. One of the items, and it is related to summer camps, is whether we start summer camps like we normally would in June, or do we start preparing for an early camp? So when parents do start going back to work and school-aged kids are not able to return to school, there might be a need for us to have camps early. So we're starting to look into that. We have three scenarios really for summer camps, that being one. The other is just status quo summer camps, and the third being summer camps that require fewer participants, but more camp offerings to maintain a minimum amount of kids in a camp for social distancing. So we're looking into all three of those options.
Great, thank you so much for sharing that. And then the last two things before I just touch briefly on the budget. I know that the mayor mentioned last week, perhaps even the week before, about speeds on streets. It really is getting quite concerning, frankly. So any thoughts from the city manager or the police department about what you can do? I mean, they've gone so fast, you can't even like wave at them and tell them to slow down. So any creative ideas, whether it's some communication or enforcement, or I don't know what?
And while the police chief gets queued up, let me also offer the opportunity for Philip Kami to chime in if he'd like to. So go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, so as far as the police department goes, we actually have picked up this weekend. We started enforcement, actually led to a couple of DUI arrests, drunk, driving under the influence arrest. So we've started ramping that back up, because again, we feel people have had plenty of opportunity to be aware of the restrictions and comply with the rules of the road. So you'll see more proactive enforcement out there, but at the same time, we're still advocating social distancing for our officers.
Thank you. And Mr. Kami, as you're getting queued up, one of the other things we've heard is we've heard a few people ask that specific roads be closed to vehicles, so if you want to touch on that as well.
Hi, there I am. Hi, good evening. Yes, so apologies for the shouting in the background. So, yeah, the challenges of having a six-year-old home, just finished dinner. So, yeah, we are actually currently looking at opportunities to do, to roll out something very similar to what you've seen in Oakland, Minneapolis, and Denver. So we're reviewing options right now. Can you please close the door? I'm actually.
All our video calls are like this, all our meetings, they're great.
Yeah, I thought this would be the quiet place. I'm actually hiding in his room. So, yeah, we're currently reviewing potential opportunities to close some streets to local traffic, which would potentially, you know, provide us, you know, some sense of more safety. Yeah, it's definitely been an increase in driver's speeds seen throughout the Bay Area, and that's something that Oakland also had noted in their Slow Streets program. So, yep, we're looking at the same thing and hope to have something for you to review soon.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, yeah, that's a creative place to be. I unfortunately have to be near where the dog needs to go in and out, so if I ever disappear, that's why. And then, real quickly, I know that Councilmember Koo had asked last week about gardening. It continues to be an issue. Maybe, I mean, I'm not the only one who has a lawnmower and is sharing it or helping other people mow their lawns. So just Chief Duker, I know this sounds like a small thing, but is this something that ESVs can help coordinate, so it's not going up to the city and back down?
Both Ken and perhaps Chief Johnson may want to comment on this as well.
Sure, just to clarify, on the topic of neighbors sharing gardening equipment, I wasn't sure what the question was, if you could.
So, so we're getting a number of questions and emails and calls about people very concerned because they're older and unable to mow their own lawn or don't have the right equipment. And so I know it sounds like a small thing, but it is actually a big issue for some of our older citizens, wondering about clearing the pathways. Is this something that the block coordinators could take on proactively? And that could be one of the things we identify, in addition to who has gloves and extra Lysol?
Sharing of tools and skills, doesn't matter what circumstance. So absolutely, I know anecdotally that certain neighborhoods via Nextdoor or their email list or whatever channels they've been using have done that. And in some cases, it's through the respective NPC, Neighborhood Preparedness Coordinator. So certainly something that we can foster more of through the ESV program.
Not important, but the next time you communicate with everybody, that'd be great. And then the final thing, just as on the budget, Mr. Chikata, thank you again for continuing to preview what it'll be like. I know Councilmember Niss spoke about being kind last week, and I had a quote a few weeks ago about being kind and also having courage. And I'm confident that we will need courage when we address the budget. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, thank you. Trying to be quick here. So I saw on the item 3A questions and response that there are some city staff that have childcare impacts. Do we expect any of our city staff to use the care.com service?
Well, thank you for mentioning that. We are rolling out a partnership with care.com, really as an offering, basically an option for both our employees, as well as in particular, members of the community that might have some background in childcare or simply babysitting, including college kids that may be now back. And so just the platform that it provides is one that would enable matching between parents and families that need childcare and both volunteers, as well as paid providers that might be in the area and interested in providing childcare for essential workers. So that's a creative partnership that, again, we're just launching this week. So that's one key component of it. In terms of other issues that our employees have been identifying, you know, that's certainly one, and it could apply even on a partial day, as I've been noting. You know, we've learned that we need to be very flexible as an employer in order to accommodate time periods that families need to focus on the homeschooling, and then work can, to the extent that it can, flex around the clock as well. So flexibility is the key. And at the same time, the FFCRA introduces another level of responsibility, really, for both parents as well as employers. So we're working through the particulars of that.
Yeah, it was really, my question was really around the administrative leave, like a certain number of employees had childcare issues. So I just wondered if you thought that might help those employees?
It really could, yeah. Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing, two things from last week's meeting. Uncoverly, I know I sent you some private messages, but I just wanted to say in front of the whole council that I think there might be an opportunity, rather than just deferring rent for some of the leaseholders, to see if we could potentially look at some rent moratoriums and share some of that pain with the school district or rent reduction. You know, very concerned about all these different groups who are just incurring debt that they have to pay back at some future time.
We raised the issue, so it's in conversation.
And then, second one was, you know, I think most public transportation has changed its schedule, and I think it'd be interesting, maybe at a future meeting, to see like, what is the shuttle being used? And could we use it in a more socially distance-friendly way for trips to the doctor, or whatever might be needed for, you know, certain members of the community?
Sure. It might be helpful, I think Philip is prepared to perhaps give a quick snapshot on where we are with the shuttle, and could certainly follow up with more detail in the future date. For Philip?
Hi, yes, thanks again. So, yeah, the shuttle's currently operating on its regular schedule, and it's carrying in the twenties to thirties passengers per day. Typically, in the twenties, where it's around two passengers per trip. So it's not really high usage, but we do believe that those passengers are using it either for essential trips or to get to essential work. The provider, TransMetro, that provides our service, is sterilizing, or I should say, cleaning the buses with sterilizing chemicals each day, sanitizing, thank you. And they are, they have information that's posted throughout the bus to make sure that people are keeping distance on the bus. So, you know, should you desire to either reduce service or halt service, that is, those are options that we have available. But I will say that I do believe that it is still providing an essential service to some people that really do not have other means of getting to places.
Yeah, great. That's a useful update. And yet, if the volume were low enough, you know, there might be other ways we could provide those people transportation that could be more cost-effective, but just something to keep in mind, doesn't have to go to zero, it could be point-to-point or Uber vouchers or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can. I believe that providing Uber vouchers or, and we actually talked about potentially providing on-demand service, we believe it would actually induce demand, cause more demand, and thus provide actually a higher cost instead of reducing cost. So I do think that that would give me some concern in order to do that. I think the other thing is, we should keep in mind is, as we reduce, as we reduce service or stop service, that we might have concerns about bringing the service back online. So that's, not to say that we shouldn't consider either of those things, it's just things we should consider as we're looking at the service.
And since you're odd, yeah, I am interested in hearing about some of the road closing ideas.
Yeah.
It does seem like you can pretty much bike anywhere right now, like traffic is not an issue. So, but we can wait if you're going to bring that back at a later point.
Yeah, I'll bring it back. Actually, I wanted to share one more thing, is that Oakland, you know, it was pretty widely announced that they were going to be separating 74 miles of bikeway throughout the city to bikes. And it's really exciting, actually, because I live in Oakland, I actually lived very close to one of those bikeways. So I was really excited to go see it, but what I found out is actually, right now, they're only piloting four streets. So they've done kind of a limited rollout. The streets are not anywhere near me, so I was able to find pictures off of Twitter and kind of see what they were doing. But it's not quite as large in the scale that they're rolling it out with actual barricades. It's closing the streets through traffic, but what they're saying is we're designating those streets as through traffic or local traffic only. So, you know, it's just something to consider as we bring back, but we are planning on selecting some streets that we think would be really strategically important to separate for local traffic and bicycles and pedestrians only.
Cool. And then the last one, I think we, you know, we've heard that the RVs are down about 50%, which is pretty interesting. I think it indicates that there were a large number of workers living in RVs who maybe have gone home. But I do want to suggest that might be a good time to reach out to the homeless that are still here to really understand their needs. It's kind of an opportunity for the people that are still in RVs to understand kind of what their situation is, if that's possible. Thanks.
Councilmember Koo.
Actually, Councilmember, the Vice Mayor has mentioned my topic, so I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Filso.
I already asked two questions.
Okay, just, I'll just go quickly. So, yeah, definitely, you know, I sent you guys that article about Oakland, and I think one thing they're doing there is they're using citizen volunteers to enforce it, actually. Don't know if that's a model we need to follow, but interested in it. Thank you, Councilmember Cormac, for bringing up the traffic issue again. I think we've all seen that. On the gardeners issue, one thing we are, you know, obviously, it's prohibited under the county's order, but as our chief has mentioned multiple times, you know, first they're educating, then they're enforcing. I think that's appropriate, given the nature of that situation. Last thing I just want to get out there is, on the health data, the county, I believe, a few days ago began publishing city by city. The county, I believe, a few days ago began publishing city by city statistics of COVID nineteen infections. And so a few things that I just think are worth sharing. So we did look into it and it is resident. So that means Palo Alto, I think now the cap is sixty or sixty one infected residents. It's not people who, you know, maybe at the hospitals or things like that. It's actually residents who reside in Palo Alto. But it's only tracking infections. And so it's not saying these people were necessarily very ill or very sick. As you know, I think a large portion of the infections are asymptomatic, so they could be tracking that as well. But I am in contact with the county to try and figure out, can we get any more definition around that in terms of like age profiles? Or is it a certain area in Palo Alto or institution, things like that? I think that's about it from my perspective. I'll note, we're about forty minutes behind schedule. We still have a couple of big items. So, Mr. City Manager, anything else to wrap up?
No, that covers it. Thank you for the feedback and we'll keep at it.
Great.
Mike, this is Beth.
Yep.
We have some attendees. Do you want to see if they want to speak to this item?
Thank you for the reminder. We should have done that earlier. I really appreciate that. Sure, if if city staff could go through the attendees we have and if any of them wish to speak, let's go through that. And each of them shall have two minutes, please.
If any public speakers wish to speak, please raise your hand using the raise your hand icon on your computer. Mr. Mayor, I don't see any hands coming up.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And I think for people who are dialing in, it's star six or star nine, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, let's move on to the next item, the annual Earth Day report.
All right. Mr. Eagleson, ready to, ready to go?
I am.
Where's yours?
Okay, good evening, Mayor Fine and City Council. I'm Brad Eagleson, Director of Public Works. Before we begin our presentation on the study session, I would like to acknowledge the unprecedented circumstances that are created by the coronavirus. We have two items on sustainability this evening. The Earth Day Report that looks back at progress made towards the city's sustainability goals last year in twenty nineteen and this year's upcoming Sustainability Work Plan. So it's certainly unusual to be having these discussions during the coronavirus emergency. But on the other hand, addressing climate change remains a very important priority. And we do plan to continue this work as best we can under the circumstances that we find ourselves in currently. I did want to call out that we have a number of cross departmental team members of the city's Sustainability Leadership Team in the meeting and available to answer your questions this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Sustainability Manager, Christine Long, who will give the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. This is Christine Long, Sustainability Manager. As you all know, City of Palo Alto has an overarching goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions eighty percent below our nineteen ninety levels by twenty thirty. And as Brad mentioned, these are the team leads from all of our S cap areas. And, sorry, the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan areas, which we sometimes refer to as the S cap. And all of the team leads are on the line today to answer questions at the end of this presentation. So unlike previous years, we do not have an updated greenhouse gas inventory to show you. Normally, we would show you a chart like this of our greenhouse gas emissions. However, this year's Earth Day Report is going to be primarily a twenty eighteen to twenty twenty Sustainability Implementation Plan progress report. For the first time, we are going to have a consultant, AECOM, assist us with completing our two thousand nineteen greenhouse gas inventory. The full results of the two thousand nineteen greenhouse gas inventory will be included in the twenty twenty Sustainability and Climate Action Plan City Council Study Session that we hope to have in the early fall. And every year, the City of Palo Alto reports on our climate related data to the CDT or the Carbon Disclosure Project. For the second year in a row, the City of Palo Alto made the A-list for not only implementing a climate action plan, but also for making progress toward achieving our climate goals. And while we're motivated by our progress to keep striving for more, we're not done yet. The hardest part is yet to come, figuring out the actions we need to take to get up to our eighty by thirty goal. So in two thousand nineteen, sustainability and climate change was a council priority. And we'd like to review some of the project highlights from two thousand nineteen. So here we have our progress snapshot for energy. In November two thousand nineteen, council unanimously adopted an all electric mandate for residential new construction projects, which went into effect on April first, twenty twenty. All electric homes are cheaper to build and operate over the lifetime of the building and helps the city meet its greenhouse gas reduction goal. The all electric mandate currently doesn't apply to existing buildings, which represents a much larger share of carbon emissions. But staff is working on options to present councils for potentially extending this mandate to cover significantly modeled projects. We also initiated a multifamily building gas furnace retrofit pilot. We launched an induction cooktop monorail program with Akira. And the City of Palo Alto's Regional Water Quality Control Plant replaced the city's facility with the largest energy use, the sewage sludge incinerators, with a more environmentally friendly sludge dewatering and truck loadout facility. The upgraded treatment process will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by approximately sixteen thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year, which is about the equivalent of taking three thousand five hundred passenger cars off the road. This is a little more than we anticipated and more than what we reported in the Earth Day Report. And as you can see, the picture on the right is the city's sewage solids gas fed incinerators being shut down permanently. And the picture on the left is the new dewatering technology that replaced the incinerators. So in regards to our key performance indicators for energy, the percent electric efficiency savings is the total electric savings in kilowatt hours from energy efficiency programs and Palo Alto's Energy Reach Code expressed as a percentage of the city's total electric use. So in FY nineteen, that was point six one percent or the equivalent of eight hundred and fifty three California homes' total power use in a year. And the percent gas efficiency savings is the total gas savings in thermes from energy efficiency programs and Palo Alto's Energy Reach Code expressed as a percentage of the city's total gas use. So for FY nineteen, that was point four four percent or the equivalent of a hundred and forty eight passenger vehicles taken off the road for a year. City did not meet the council adopted energy efficiency goals for FY nineteen. And we're not on track to meet the FY twenty, FY twenty goals either. Since the standards for energy efficiency have been raised to such a high level, incremental efficiency savings are really difficult to achieve. For avoided natural gas use due to electrification programs, that number was six thousand and eight thermes. Large decreases in natural gas use are needed to achieve our eighty by thirty goal. And while gas efficiency will play a part in reducing emissions, building electrification will need to play an even larger role, even though it is one of the more expensive forms of greenhouse gas reduction available. And the city did not meet its targets for two thousand nineteen due to several factors, mostly involving higher expenses for retrofitting gas appliances in existing buildings and higher operational costs of heat pump equipment. For both efficiency savings and natural gas use, we're looking to the twenty twenty Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update to look for ways to improve the amount of progress we make so that we can achieve our eighty by thirty goal. And moving on to mobility. Transportation has consistently been a top city council priority in some form or another for the last six years or so and will continue to be a priority for twenty twenty. Some project highlights for mobility include, in in response to the increasing prominence of mobility issues in Palo Alto and throughout the region, transportation resources and functions have been transitioned to a separate office of transportation, moving out of the division of the Planning and Community Environment Department, which is now the Planning and Development Services Department. We participated in and advocated for regional transit programs. We increased active transportation mode share for school commutes. Active transportation being any self propelled, human powered mode of transportation, such as walking, biking or rolling to get from one place to another. And in Palo Alto, high school bike commuting went from twelve percent in two thousand one to fifty one percent in two thousand nineteen, which is quite remarkable. Building a sustainable transportation system also requires thoughtful planning around housing. Building housing near transit, for example, can reduce vehicle miles traveled. And council adopted the Housing Work Plan Implementation Ordinance on April first, two thousand nineteen. And this is me at last year's Earth Day Report Study Session when we were all meeting in person. And that's my active transportation first last mile commute solution. So road transportation, as you know, is Palo Alto's greatest single source of greenhouse gas emissions, which includes local trips as well as commute trips. So since two thousand seventeen, or sorry, since two thousand fifteen, we've seen a fifteen percent reduction in single occupancy vehicle trips to downtown Palo Alto. We've seen a three percent increase in ride shares in downtown and a twenty one percent increase in transit ridership in downtown. And we've seen an increase in commute benefits participation by city employees by an additional sixty employees participating. The Palo Alto Federal Transportation Administration Fair Value Commuting Demonstration Project launched a pilot program in two thousand nineteen to improve employee participation in available commute benefits. The pilot included the creation of a commute concierge to assist staff with navigating and utilizing available commute benefits, which may have led to the increase in staff commute benefits participation. So for electric vehicles, we drafted a three year EV work plan to increase EV adoption. We presented that to the Utilities Advisory Commission in September two thousand nineteen. Palo Alto is also awarded a one million dollar Cal EV IP grant for electric vehicle charger installations at commercial properties, including nonprofits, multifamily and mixed use buildings. The city identified a replacement strategy to expand electric vehicle deployment in city fleet and added a S one fifty hybrid XL and two Chevy Bolts. The Bay Area's first all electric refuse collection truck completed its second year of service. The electric truck has saved about six thousand gallons of diesel fuel and reduced seventy eight metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents per year. We completed a customer survey on EV adoption barriers, which found that seventy percent of survey responders who don't drive an electric vehicle said that say that they would be extremely interested in getting one if they knew that electric vehicle charging was readily available. And we co-sponsored workshops and ride and drive events for more than four hundred customers. So as I just mentioned, road transportation currently accounts for the largest portion of the community's remaining greenhouse gas emissions. In Palo Alto, twenty nine percent of new vehicles purchased in Palo Alto in two thousand seventeen was an electric vehicle, which is the highest adoption rate in the country. For point of comparison, in two thousand seventeen, the electric vehicle market share for new vehicles in all of California was about five percent. So we're doing quite well on that regard. Based on vehicle registration data from the DMV and the California Air Resources Board Vehicle Count, there was an estimated four thousand five hundred electric vehicles registered in Palo Alto at the end of two thousand nineteen, which translates to about seven percent EV penetration. And that translates to an estimated ten thousand eight hundred greenhouse, sorry, ten thousand eight hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent avoided. And not surprisingly, fifty two percent of the electric vehicles sold in Palo Alto in two thousand seventeen were Tesla. So moving on to water. The Regional Water Quality Control Plant is a local source of drought proof sustainable water, only a small fraction of which is currently being used for irrigation and toilet flushing. In November two thousand nineteen, council approved a partnership agreement with the Santa Clara Valley Water District and the City of Mountain View to design and construct a saltwater removal facility at the Regional Water Quality Control Plant, which gives Valley Water the option to acquire about half of the treated wastewater produced by the Regional Water Quality Control Plant and for Palo Alto to have a future option for water supply. In May two thousand nineteen, city council accepted a green stormwater infrastructure plan, which outlines how the city intends to transform its stormwater infrastructure. And related to the requirements of the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Plan, staff developed a policy to integrate GSI and sustainability in city policies, plans, and the capital improvement process. And we'll be rolling that out hopefully later this year. And finally, Palo Alto, in collaboration with the Valley Water District, developed a Northwest County Recycled Water Strategic Plan to identify the best potable and non potable options for water reuse in the Regional Water Quality Control Plant service area. So as you know, water is a limited resource in California and its availability is affected by drought and will be further impacted by climate change and potential changes to the state water system. So per capita, per capita potable water use, which is gallons per capita per day, decreased from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, but it's still not as low as two thousand seventeen when it was a hundred and thirty four. For a percent recycled water use capacity or the percent of the recycled water capacity we're actually using, it decreased slightly, but we are working on programs and initiatives to increase this. So when the two thousand sixteen Sustainability and Climate Action Plan framework was adopted by council, staff anticipated the need to update the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan in twenty twenty, since the work plan only goes through the end of twenty twenty. In order to continue progress towards our climate and sustainability goals and targets, staff has started a twenty twenty Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update. And while the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty Sustainability Implementation Plan focused on only four areas of activity of energy, mobility, electric vehicles and water, the twenty twenty Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update proposes to include those four areas and then add climate adaptation and sea level rise, natural environment and zero waste. So for climate adaptation and sea level rise, some of the highlights from two thousand nineteen include, council adopted a sea level rise adaptation policy in March two thousand eighteen. Staff released an RFP for sea level rise adaptation consultant services in November two thousand nineteen. And we hope that services will include a vulnerability assessment, development of a development of a sea level rise adaptation plan, community engagement and public meetings, tool development and an education strategy and research and technical guidance. A horizontal levee is a gently sloped, irrigated and vegetated flood control levee along a shoreline, which provides key transitional habitat, storm surge attenuation and wastewater polishing. A preliminary design for a Palo Alto horizontal levee pilot project was completed in two thousand nineteen. The Regional Water Quality Control Plant new primary outfall project includes a new outfall pipeline to convey treated effluent to the bay as well as rehabilitation of the existing fifty two year old outfall pipe and pumps of replacement for effluent discharge to Renzo Marsh. And finally, during heavy rainfall, stormwater runoff flows from three creeks towards the bay, where it's detained by the surrounding earthen levee and tide gates known as the Palo Alto Flood Basin. The existing tide gate was built by Valley Water in nineteen fifty six and is in need of repair. The new tide gate will be made adaptable to sea level rise scenarios. Sustainability is not only about mitigation, adaptation and resilience, but also regeneration, which is identifying opportunities for renewal, restoration and growth of our natural resources and environment. For natural environment, City of Palo Alto Utilities was recognized with the Tree Line USA Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the fifth year in a row. Palo Alto City Council approved the Urban Forest Plan Second Edition in February two thousand nineteen. Record tree planting and pruning of thirty six thousand public trees provided nearly eighteen million dollars in benefits. This is just one example of the carbon bank of plant, soil and water based organisms. And further quantification work is planned in conjunction with with the implementation of the Enterprise GIS system. And finally, continued development of an initiative to plant up to 10,000 trees in South Palo Alto. And here's a picture of a creek cleanup, which enhances the ecosystem. Reducing the amount of waste discarded in landfills is another important strategy for both greenhouse gas reduction and overall sustainability. Getting to the 95% diversion by 2030 goal for zero waste will require refinement of existing programs, the adoption of new policies and programs, and working with businesses and residents that purchase products that will eventually become waste. The 2018 Zero Waste Plan identified actions that have the potential to divert over 15,000 tons of waste from landfill and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by almost 39,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents. So in June 2019, council approved one of the region's strictest restrictions on plastics with a new ordinance to ban disposable foodware items to reduce plastics in the environment and water waste. A key component of the Foodware Packaging Reduction Initiative of the 2018 Zero Waste Plan is to reduce the amount of disposable single-use foodware packaging generated in Palo Alto. Deconstruction, which is the careful disassembly of building components to maximize reuse and recycling, became a new ordinance in June 2018. Through the new ordinance, valuable materials that would have been destroyed by traditional demolition will be recovered for reuse and increased diversion. And the Household Hazardous Waste Program expanded and held an inaugural reopening celebration of its household hazardous waste reuse zone. On the left is a photo of Girl Scout Troop 60016 from May of 2018 with Mayor Niss. There, "This is the last straw campaign spurred the movement that resulted in a disposable foodware ordinance." And on the right is a photo of Assistant Director of Public Works Phil Bobel and then Mayor Phil Seth at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the reopening of the household hazardous waste reuse zone. So for 2020, sustainability in the context of climate change and improving mobility for all are 2020 council priorities. In 2020, our goal is to reinvigorate sustainability as a core value by integrating it into our programs and operations. Staff prepared a 2020-2021 Sustainability Work Plan and launched the 2020 Sustainability in Climate Action Plan Update, which, as Brad mentioned earlier, we'll be discussing later this evening. We'd like to thank you for your time, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have about the Earth Day Report.
Oh, thank you very much. Nice little ending slide here. Just want to thank staff. And let's go to members of the public if they have any comments on this study session, and then we'll come back to council.
If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. I see a hand from David Page. You have two minutes to speak.
... about the crisis at hand. But as you know, the climate is also in crisis. Maybe a much more gradual problem than the COVID crisis. But what I'm hoping to do is to encourage all of you to do more and do it sooner in terms of preventing the much bigger problem that's coming down the road. I realize that at this time, the city is appropriately concerned about your budget. And so I sent in an SCAP feedback from David Page, if you look for it in your email. A couple of the pages that I sent in in this rebuttal to the SCAP update concern how the city can save money and cut pollution both at the same time. Some of these ideas are speculative. I'm not a budget expert. But my idea was to stimulate the thinking amongst your well-qualified staff to see if there's other types of ways that the city can cut pollution and save money at the same time. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Susan Chamberlain. Susan, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the 350 Silicon Valley Palo Alto City Team. And we have been looking carefully at the SCAP and have convened a couple of Zoom meetings with local community members to urging them to weigh in on the SCAP. We applaud the climate goal of 80% reduction by 2030, but feel like the current plan is not likely to meet those goals. It needs to be much more aggressive. And in particular, we need to have specific targets that directly connect the goals to actions to measurable results. For example, to reduce our natural gas footprint in line with our goal, we need to know how many heat pump water heaters are required to be installed each year in Palo Alto homes. And similarly, if we want, if 70% of employees who commute in single occupancy vehicles would work from home several days a week, we need to know how that will impact our greenhouse gas calculations. Here are a few additional recommendations. That we have more robust support for the TMA. Incentivize EV adoption. Zone for denser housing near transit. Standardize building codes with other cities and streamline the electrification permitting process. Lower fees for electrification permits and enact effective communication programs to educate residents for ultra-low carbon lifestyles. Thank you very much.
Dwayne, you're our next speaker. You have two minutes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, Dwayne.
Hi. I wasn't prepared.
Your hand was up to speak. Confirm you do not want to speak right now?
No, not right now.
Okay, thank you. Ben, you have two minutes to speak. Ben, did you want to speak? Mayor, that appears to be all the speakers.
Okay, thank you very much.
There's actually a couple others that just may have just come in.
Hi, I tried to speak on the phone but didn't seem to work. This is Arthur Keller, and I can't seem to sync my phone with my video, which worked on Zoom for other people on other calls, but not on this call. I have a couple things to talk about. Firstly, congratulations to the city for adopting all-electric homes for new home construction. Unfortunately, city staff undercut that with starting a pre-application process so people can get in under the wire. Excuse me? I said city staff undercut that with having a process for pre-application process so that those people who hadn't completed their applications could still not have electric homes. So those homes will be here 50 years or longer not electric. Housing near transit is an interesting concept, but more people who live in Palo Alto actually take bicycle than all forms of transit combined. So don't expect much car reductions from housing near transit. With electric vehicles, we should reconvene the Electric Vehicle Task Force. We should think about with this kind of penetration, having 100% of all parking spaces have a conduit. Somebody's speaking over me. I'm not sure who that is.
Shut the fuck up. Shut the fuck up. Shut the fuck up.
Whoever's doing that, that is completely unacceptable. You know, we're trying to conduct a public meeting here. Mr. Keller, we'll save you some time. Can we please mute everybody except Mr. Keller?
Yes, they've been muted.
Thank you. Arthur, if you'd please continue, and we'll give you a little bit of extra time at the end. I'm sorry for that.
I think Arthur's been muted. I think he's the top one.
I'm now unmuted. Thank you. So what I was going to say is that because of the desire for penetration of electric vehicles of 50% and more beyond 2030, we should have 100% of the parking spaces have conduit for the, when you build parking garages, it's very cheap to put in conduit. When you put in a parking garage, much more expensive later on. Also, we should publicize the Low Income Bay Area Air Quality Management District Plan called Clean Cars for All, which promotes clean vehicles for those people who are of low income. And finally, with respect to sea level rise, we should work with Valley Water and the Army Corps of Engineers and the state agencies. With respect to, I understand a contract was signed in September of 2019 between those parties to study sea level rise adaptation for Palo Alto and perhaps for Sunnyvale to do a study on that with construction probably in the 2030 to 2035 timeframe if all goes according to plan. So staff should be monitoring that and reporting that to the council and the public. Thank you.
Ben, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes.
Hi, miss. Hello?
Would you like to speak on this item?
How many more speakers do we have here?
It looks like three. Some of them are not unmuting.
Okay, let's just go through them, but I think some of these are not real, unfortunately.
Hello?
Hello?
I have a question.
All right. Beth, unless you see anyone else who you think is legitimate, I think we're going to end public comment on this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you for those who had something to contribute. Let's go back to council. I see Councilmember Phil Seth's hand first.
Thank you very much. I got a question for, I guess, Christine. And it really has, it's really sort of the same question that Susan Chamberlain started to ask, which is, it seems like, it seems like we're doing, we're doing all this good stuff, and yet we're hearing we're short of our goal. And so, you know, is there, in fact, a giant spreadsheet somewhere that says, okay, you know, here's where we are today, okay? And here's where we need to be. And here's the quantitative relationship between those things. Here's how many EVs it's going to take. Here's how many water heaters it's going to take. Here's how many people we need to get using bicycles instead. Because right now, it seems like what we've had so far is kind of a lot of good stuff, and then this 80-30 goal, and sort of something happens in between, and we're not sure what. So is there a giant spreadsheet somewhere that actually lays all that out?
This is Brad. I'll take a crack at that. There are spreadsheet tools that were used for developing the initial SCAP, and they made a lot of different assumptions about the programs that we have in place and what those would accomplish. But what they didn't do was set out year-by-year goals for what needed to happen to necessarily stay on track. And then many assumptions for things like fuel efficiency for vehicle miles traveled and things like that were static and not updated. So really, where we are as we head into the 2020 SCAP update, I think it was mentioned in Christine's presentation that we have AECOM on board as a consultant. They're going to be taking a fresh look and doing the analysis both on the programs that we have in place as to where those are taking us. And more importantly, the new ideas that we're getting as we engage staff and the community at starting out the SCAP update process. So really, it's in the next months as we begin that work, have our community engagement process, and then come back, as Christine mentioned, in early fall for the city council study session, that we're going to have more information to share with you on that.
Okay, thanks very much. You know, year by year, you know, that would be incredible. I think that would be awesome. But I mean, just having here's how much, I think, would be really important, okay? Even without even a number of years involved. Because, you know, we say we're at 7% EV penetration in the City of Palo Alto. You know, it sounds good, but is it good? I mean, is it enough? Or probably not. Where do we actually need to get to? I mean, if we get to 15, is that enough? Is 25 enough? Is 85? Where do we need to get to? And I think, you know, it's sort of hard to manage what you can't measure. And so I think, you know, I would love to see something a little more quantitative going forward if we're going to take this stuff seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth. Next, I see Councilmember Cormac. And to my council colleagues, please hit the raise hand button if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Councilmember Phil Seth has anticipated both of my questions, but I want to spend a little bit more time on them. I wonder, Ms. Long, if you could put the bar graph up again that was in the presentation. And while you're doing that, I'll just say, I don't know if we're on track. Last year, I remember asking this exact question, like, are we on track? And at least we had, you know, a line that went down on the farther side, and we could see where we were headed and that transportation and electrification of buildings was required. So, you know, of course, it's an emergency, and I want to honor what Director Eggleston said at the beginning of his remarks. Nevertheless, I would have anticipated seeing a graph this evening that was similar to the one we saw last year, which extended its way down so we could see where we were headed. Really hard to know if we're on track. And then the second question was the same question I asked last time, is are we doing enough? And, you know, I think Councilmember Phil Seth also touched on that. And I think we can defer that to item four. But, you know, there are just a number of things that members of the public have brought up, and that I know staff is interested in. And setting goals on that, I think, is going to be important. AECOM, when they come forward with a recommendation, hopefully, there'll be a range of scenarios that will help us, you know, assess what changes we need to make going forward. I know that, appreciate all the members of the public who sent in comments today. I will say that with this level of detail, sending them at 4:30 makes it a little bit hard for all of us to absorb all of your comments, but we certainly did the best we could, and we thank you for that level of detail, which, you know, I expect to see going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Next, I have Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, Happy Earth Day, everybody. A little early. Thanks for the update. Yeah, I'll see a lot of the specific comments, I think, for the SCAP item. Just a couple of high-level questions. The first one is really around energy. You know, it's a super dynamic environment. I mean, the growth of renewable energy over the last 10 years has been incredible. I don't think anybody could have forecasted it accurately. And so, you know, we talk about are we on track or not on track? I mean, how are we forecasting energy for the future, for the next 10 years? That seems like a really hard thing to do. And I'm just curious how staff approaches that.
Christine Tam, could you take that question, please?
Good evening, councilmembers. So regarding to the future load forecast, we have been, our staff has been updating our current.
Christine, yeah, it wasn't about the load, it was really about production and the cost of energy and cleanliness of energy. Like, it's changed a lot in the last ten years, do we expect it to just get better and cheaper going forward?
Our, our, our energy contracts, actually are long-term contracts. So when we, when we enter into a renewable energy contracts, these are ten, fifteen-year contracts. So we do have pretty accurate forecasts going out to twenty thirty for our, the cost of electricity portfolio.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then the other question really, it was really a question more of a comment, I guess, just about our tree canopy. I mean, it's always good to see the benefits of those trees and just making sure we're doing enough to protect and extend our canopy. And then the last question was really, you know, again, we see mobility or transportation is kind of the big bucket that's left. That data we saw was from twenty seventeen, so what is the source and can we track our progress better? Do we think we're doing substantially better in, you know, April twenty twenty than we're showing in the report even?
I can address one part of the question, this is Brad, and then I'll ask Sylvia Starlak to comment further. So in terms of the reductions that are seen because of the adoption of electric vehicles in Palo Alto, those emissions reductions have been built into the inventories we're doing. Just basically looking at the number of vehicles, typical miles traveled for an average vehicle and the fact that Palo Alto has carbon-neutral electricity. And maybe on the overall VMT and mobility, Sylvia could speak a little further to that.
Trying to get my camera to start, sorry. Hello? Am I on? You're on, Sylvia. Thank you, I see, I was saying Brad. So regarding data around mobility, we are using the downtown commute survey that is provided to us by the TMA. We are hoping to improve our data collection around, around mobility.
But the EV owner, EV ownership in Palo Alto, was that from the data source?
No, 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 sorry, the EV ownership came directly from the DMV.
Okay, it just seemed like it was from twenty seventeen, so I just wondered if we had newer, newer information.
Brad or Christine might be able to ask to answer that question. I think the request was made within the prior year, so it was probably the latest data that the DMV could give us.
I believe the EV penetration data that we're showing is for two thousand nineteen.
Okay, great.
The two thousand seventeen data was new electric vehicle sales.
Okay, all right, well, thank you guys, appreciate the update.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Next, I see Councilmember Ness.
Good. So a couple of thoughts. Someone may want to comment on this, but has anyone noticed that the sky is a different color? You have, I can tell.
Yes, very much so.
So it's rather astonishing to see what happens when what pollutes most of our air is gone. It's really stunning. And while I agree, Allison, those cars are driving way too fast and it's really just, it's, it's really distressing. The color of the sky is absolutely amazing. The water, the air quality today was amazing. If you look back on where we were in the fire last year or even just recently in the winter, it is some of the best we have ever seen and it's, it's just wonderful to have that right in our backyard. Go out to the Baylands, by the way, it's absolutely stunning. So secondly, looking at the number of EVs, who was it who was talking about EVs? One of our staff? Somebody out there? EVs?
It was Christine Wong.
Okay, Christine, are you there? I can see your name. There you are. So talking about EVs, because you're saying that the number of EVs we have really exceeds that of the other Bay Area cities. I heard you correctly, right? And so I'd be interested in knowing, because we're in a Tesla town, do we see, well, I say anecdotally, I see more Teslas than anything else, but is that just my perception or not?
That is not your perception. Sixty-two percent of new electric vehicle sales, of the new electric vehicle sales in two thousand seventeen, sixty-two percent were Teslas. So that is.
Doesn't that seem astonishing to you? That's, I mean, it just seems rather, rather amazing. I feel a little embarrassed that I'm still driving a Prius, I may have to switch. So, and lastly, talking about the trees, I think that our trees are really amazing. So I don't remember if you had a number for the number of South Palo Alto trees that was going to go in. Did you, or and perhaps I missed it or not?
I believe it's in the report, Councilmember Ness, that we're talking about an eventual goal of adding ten thousand trees in South Palo Alto.
You know where we are at this point, though?
The progress is slow, it's more on the order of a couple hundred trees per year, if I'm remembering correctly. Mainly through a program we're working on with Canopy. This is more difficult.
Right.
It's more difficult than other areas in the city because most of these sites are on private property. So.
tend to be rolled. So I just wanted to say that because people ask about trees all the time and they say, you know, we don't have enough trees in South Palo Alto. And I think we need to make that explanation clear, that it's not for lack of wanting to do that, but there are more challenges than in some of the other parts of town. Would you nod if that's correct?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, that does it, Adrian, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ness. Councilmembers Ku or Tanaka, I haven't seen lights from you, if you'd like to speak. None from Lydia Gregg? No, okay. Some quick comments, agree with most of my colleagues on this, thank you very much for the update and Happy Earth Day or early. And, you know, this is kind of the looking back report and in a little bit for action, and we'll get to the looking forward about what we're gonna do here in twenty twenty and going forward. One thing I'll mention is I do appreciate staff's mention of the importance of infill residential development. We are not gonna reach our climate goals if we don't reach our housing goals, so I just encourage us all to keep that in mind. With that, what I'm gonna suggest is we move on to or agenda changes, which I don't think we have any, correct, Mr. City Manager?
We do not.
Okay, we can go to oral communications and then maybe the consent calendar and then we'll take a break if that sounds good.
Mayor, we have two speakers to speak, you want to give them two minutes?
Yes, please.
Dan Gordon, it's your turn, you have two minutes to speak.
Hi, everyone, I don't know if you can see me, but I appreciate the opportunity, I just wanted to let you know. I sent out an email, after thirty-two years, I'm gonna be out of the restaurant business in Palo Alto. And there are numerous reasons for it. Number one is clearly this has been a monumental decline in the city over the last, I'd say, eight years for numerous reasons. One, one is that, you know, just the nature and demeanor of the tech industry and how it's changed the consumer profile. The other is, you know, rents and labor costs are just astronomical and the rents were something that we can't manage. That was something we inherited. But labor costs, I don't know if you guys realize it, but in a period of three and a half years, you have voted to increase labor costs seventy-eight percent across the board. And that's an untenable scenario. So when, when the self-sheltering impact in Palo Alto started occurring, once the announcement came out in January, our already low sales dropped about twenty-five percent in January, another thirty-five percent, and then finally, in March, even before the self-sheltering went on, it was down to seventy percent. So there's no way we can recover, there's no timeline for when it would make sense to reopen. And the oxygen tank is dry. I really wish it was possible through loans, PPP programs. But the one thing I would like to encourage you, I'm, I'm out of the business now and I don't have any skin in the game, so to speak. But my colleagues in the restaurant business are thinking the same thing. And you have a chance to help reinstate a recovery. And that could be done by bringing the minimum wage to state levels immediately as soon as the, the sheltering in places are removed. Large group gatherings are another problem. Without Stanford, without people downtown and with spacing that's gonna reduce capacity and seating by twenty-five percent, it just isn't worth opening, reopening a restaurant. And I'm not by myself, so if you want us to have open storefronts in the next nine months, you're really gonna have to start being proactive and working on brainstorming on what you can do for the business community locally to make, give them an incentive to want to reopen and hire people. It's really a tragic scenario. That was my comment, thanks for the.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Gordon. I just want to say, you know, behalf of the broader community, thank you for your many decades of service and business in Palo Alto. I've certainly enjoyed a lot of good barbecue and beer at your place and it's sad to see you guys go. But I'd encourage you and other business people in town to please keep on providing feedback to the city and the city council so that we can try and solve these, these big issues, but thank you so much, sir. Let's please go to the, the next speaker.
David Page, it's your turn, you have two minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you very much. I wanted to follow up on a few things that the council members mentioned just a moment ago. According to the selectively crafted records we saw in the slides earlier tonight, Palo Alto has not made any progress in the last few years in terms, in terms of the amount of pollution that's discharged into the air. Assuming we change the way the records are put together, perhaps emissions have gone up in the last few years. As you know, the devil's in the details in a lot of these things. One of the topics mentioned by the council was about electric vehicles. As far as I can tell, the reason there's so many EVs and within Palo Alto is a lot because of people deciding to buy them for their, for their own personal use and not necessarily based on what the city has done. This is, you know, expensive perhaps, but we shouldn't, the city shouldn't be taking credit for what the community is doing on its own, is my point. Finally, a last, sorry, an example about how the city could change its budget around to decrease the amount of pollution. One obvious example would be the city travel budget. Presumably, a large percentage of that is spent on airline tickets. Airlines cause a lot of pollution. If you delete the travel budget and you go to conferences and meetings by Zoom, then you create less pollution and you save money. All right, thank you very much.
Hello? Who's our next speaker?
Hello, my name is Anthony. And I just wanted to make a reference to a comment that you said before, it's just a question, a quick one. You mentioned that housing, we will never meet our housing goals until we made our, until we meet our climate goals. And I just wanted to ask you if you could give some more detail into that. That was it, that's just my question.
Thank you, sir, we're actually not allowed to respond to public commenters, but just send me an email, I'd be happy to chat.
That's the end of our speakers.
Okay, thank you very much, Beth. So that concludes oral communications. And let's move on to the consent calendar, we have two items, items three and three A. Is there, well, first, let's see, are there public commenters on the consent calendar? I see one hand up on the consent calendar. Is that correct?
Anthony, do you wish to speak on the consent calendar?
Can you hear me all right?
Anthony, do you want to speak on the consent calendar?
Um, yeah, actually, what's up with homosexuality rates in Palo Alto?
All right. So now the consent calendar comes back to council.
Actually, Mayor, if I might, there was one clarification we needed to make on a recommendation for three A. I think the, the recommendation in the staff report is to, specific to the city manager, but the clarification is it should apply to all the council-appointed officers.
Thank you. So when and if there's a motion on the consent calendar, let's incorporate that. With that, I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Let's go alphabetically. So Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Actually, sorry, I was gonna, before you take a vote, I was gonna do a no on three A.
Understood. Sorry, let me just get my bearings again. So Councilmember Cormac is a yes, Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, Councilmember Ness? Sorry, Councilmember Phil Seth, I went out of order.
I'm a yes, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Ness? You're muted, Liz. I think you have to have a voice vote.
The motion's up in front of me, so hang on while I unmute.
Can you please, can you please restate your vote, Councilmember Ness? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ku?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So my math is right, the motion carries seven to zero with Councilmember Tanaka voting no on item three A. Councilmember Tanaka would like to speak to your no vote.
Yeah, yes, definitely. So thank you for the staff report. I wrote some comments back to the responses that staff wrote and I've asked Beth to forward that to you guys along with some information that I got from fellow council members from other cities. So I, I have a quick summary here that I'll show you guys. So basically, I looked at Millbrae, Daly City, Cucino, San Mateo. And, you know, for us, with this motion that just passed, Palo Alto's giving about a hundred and five paid leave days. You compare that to Millbrae, it's about ten days, Daly City is about fifteen, Cucino, they just furlough all the part-time workers, so eighty part-time workers. And San Mateo has stopped all pay leave pass for twelve, April twelve, today, actually yesterday. So that's, that's kind of the research that I did. And, and, you know, in general, I actually wanted to really support this topic. I, I voted for it last time around and I, I think the reason why it's on consent today is because we made the. uh, we made the motion to have what is the total authorized dollar amount on, in the staff report. And um, I put that in my list of questions to ask, you know, what is the total authorized dollar amount? Uh, I was told that my calculation, um, using my very simple map, was incorrect. And um, but there was no offers to what was the correct authorization amount of the dollars. So, you know, right now, it's, it's a very, um, you know, we're kind of in a very tough economic time, we're in a basically economic meltdown. Uh, a lot of residents have lost their jobs, uh, lost their savings. This is like the one we just heard from Dan, all going bankrupt. Um, and we have a finisher duty when we approve things to know how much things are going to cost. And so a simple question like knowing what is a total authorization amount, I think is very important in making sure that we really look out for our residents, which is, I think, important. I mean, they should be our number one priorities in the cities, making sure that they're taken care of. So I regret, uh, even though I really want employees to be taken care of, I want to make sure that that, uh, you know, they're made whole and all that. But I, I think, um, it's important that we know what is, what are we, what are we spending our money on? How much is this going to be? We don't, we don't know. At least I don't know that now. Um, so hopefully in future consent items, this could be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll move to city manager comments, Mr. Chicago.
Thank you, Mayor Members of the Council. No, no specific comments. I would just note that uh, moving forward, certainly, uh, staff, on behalf of staff, I look forward to continuing to report to the council updates on um, what we're doing during this uh emergency period as well as plans for the future.
Thanks so much, sir. Um, okay, I'm gonna suggest we take a ten-minute break, uh, so if we can all reconvene here at eight fifty. And to members of the council, uh, just please be sure to mute your, your connection. See you all in ten minutes. Thank you. We'll give everybody a couple of minutes to join again. I think we're just waiting on Liz. Um, but since we have a bit of a presentation, why don't we get started with that? There's Liz.
All right, I think we're back to Brad.
Okay, good evening again, Brad Eggleston. Um, so earlier this evening, not very long ago, uh, we provided the progress report of the two thousand nineteen sustainability-related activities. And now we're moving on to focus on the work that we're currently undertaking and projects to be initiated in the future. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Christine for this presentation in just a second, but before doing so, uh, I just wanted to touch on, um, you know, the council received a number of emails from the public commenting on both this item and the study session. Uh, a lot of those were received today and just in the last couple of days. You know, what we're talking about tonight is the sustainability work plan that's based on the council priority of, for this calendar year, um, and also the, the overall SCAP update plan. And uh, many of the comments that we've received were about the importance of doing more to make sure the city meets the eighty-by-thirty climate goals. So just wanted to say, these are the kinds of comments and ideas that we're soliciting through the SCAP update process that Christine's going to talk about. And we really appreciate the comments and ideas. And I just wanted to say upfront as we enter into this that we'll be incorporating all of these thoughts into our, as input into the update process that we're undergoing. So with that, I'll turn it to Christine for the presentation.
Thanks, Brad. And once again, this is Christine Long, Sustainability Manager. I'll try to keep this brief and peppy since you're probably sick of hearing from me. Um, so as Brad mentioned, um, in this presentation, we'll review the two thousand twenty Sustainable Living Climate Action Plan update process and the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one sustainability work plan. Um, our focus of the work plan is on two thousand twenty. Uh, the two thousand twenty-one activities are draft and subject to change. So the two thousand twenty to sustainable living climate action plan update process and the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one sustainability work plan were both drafted before the current pandemic. The global response to COVID-nineteen has highlighted the tools and strategies needed to be resilient in confronting the challenge together. We can use some of the same tools and strategies for resilience when addressing, addressing climate change impacts. We still don't know yet the full impact the pandemic will have on the economy, society, and city operations. But we do know that COVID-nineteen will undoubtedly impact both the two thousand twenty sustainability and climate action plan update process and the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one sustainability work plan. Uh, staff is gonna do our best to keep moving items forward and stay on schedule, but we already know that some programs will be delayed. So this familiar chart again, as mentioned earlier this evening, this year's report did not include a two thousand nineteen greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Um, this is the familiar chart that shows our two thousand eighteen overall greenhouse gas emissions from both Palo Alto municipal operations and community-wide emissions in metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents, starting with our nineteen ninety baseline, two thousand five as a point of reference, and then the last several years of emissions data. Each different colored bar represents the various sources of emissions that contribute to our overall greenhouse gas emissions. And um, as a result of various city-led initiatives, programs, and activities focused on climate change and sustainability, by the end of two thousand eighteen, Palo Alto reduced greenhouse gas emissions an estimated thirty-six percent from our nineteen ninety baseline, despite a population increase of twenty percent during that same time period. And as shown in the chart, the red bar, uh, road transportation represents Palo Alto's largest remaining source of greenhouse gas emissions at about sixty-four percent of the remaining total, followed by natural gas use at thirty-two percent of the remaining emissions. The solid blue bar represents emissions from natural gas use. And the shaded blue bar represents Palo Alto green gas offsets. As a bridging strategy, carbon offsets are being purchased in an amount equal to the greenhouse gas emissions caused by natural gas use within the city. And you may have noticed that we're leading with um, emissions are down thirty-six percent, um, not the fifty-six point five percent with offsets. That is one of the comments we received from the public that we're implementing uh real time. So accounting for natural gas offsets has a dramatic effect on the city's overall greenhouse gas emissions, which is why we're presenting both the natural gas use as well as the offsets purchased. Um, if we include natural gas offsets, greenhouse gas emissions are down about fifty-six point five percent from the nineteen ninety-nine baseline. And then road transportation becomes ninety-four percent of the remaining emissions. But as you can see, natural gas use hasn't really changed in the past few years. So while greenhouse gas emissions reduction is not the only goal of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, uh, which we sometimes refer to as the SCAP, it's a major one. And to achieve the eighty percent reduction goal by two thousand thirty, Palo Alto will need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by about three hundred thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent from the current emission level. Or if you count offsets, um, about a hundred fifty thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. So for the city to continue progress towards our climate and sustainability goals and targets, as we mentioned earlier, we're gonna need to update our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan to further study the highest impact actions to take. And then we can answer some of the questions from Councilmember McCormick and Councilmember Phil Seth about what we need to do and the targets we need uh to get to our eighty-by-thirty goal. So, um, as you know, we are launching our two thousand twenty Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update to determine the goals and key actions that we need to meet our sustainability targets. And throughout the process, we'll be looking to the community to provide feedback on the various potential goals and key actions that the city can take to get us to our eighty-by-thirty target. We'll also be looking to council, um, to provide guidance and direction throughout the process. Um, as you can see in the orange row, we've already provided a very brief informational report to council to outline the process. And even though it's not spelled out on this chart where you're including a brief overview of the two thousand twenty Sustainable Living Climate Action Plan. And even though it's not spelled out on this chart, where you're including a brief overview of the 2020 Sustainable Living Climate Action Plan update in this Sustainability Work Plan presentation. In preparation for the 2020 Sustainable Living and Climate Action Plan update, staff reviewed the goals and actions in the 2016 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan framework, the 2018 to 2020 Sustainability Implementation Plan, the 2018 Zero Waste Plan, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, Greenhouse Gas Reduction High Impact Practices, and the Carbon Neutral Cities Alliance Game Changers List to draft potential goals and key actions. And these potential goals and key actions are meant to be a starting point for discussion. They're not the final product, they're just the starting point for discussion as we gather community input on both the draft potential goals and the key actions, as well as what other goals and key actions we need to add to get us to our 80 by 30 goal. Each of the seven SCAP areas will include SMART goals, which stands for specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely, as well as the key actions that we mentioned previously. And you can see in the blue row, we're currently working on our 2019 greenhouse gas inventory with the help of AECOM. And as you can see in the green row, we were scheduled to have a 2020 Sustainable Living Climate Action Plan Community Workshop to start gathering community input on the potential goals and key actions. But due to the now familiar guidance from Santa Clara County to shelter in place, we restructured what was supposed to be an in-person workshop into a virtual workshop. We turned the community workshop into an eight-part, pre-recorded, on-demand webinar so that participants could view each part when they had time and are also able to provide feedback during the webinar sets recorded. The virtual workshop launched on March 31st and will close tomorrow evening. To date, we've had about 147 registered participants. And we're in the process of summarizing all the comments, both that came in directly through the chat box of the webinar, as well as comments that have been emailed to us. And we'll share all the feedback from the participants and post on our website by April 21st and begin to address all the comments. We've learned a lot from this first virtual workshop. And we'll be taking the lessons learned to improve future virtual engagement opportunities, which most likely will all be pre-recorded to avoid Zoom bombing and other glitches. So back to the proposed process. As you can see in the green row, we also plan on hosting an in-person 2020 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan summit in the fall. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that still. Some of the SCAP areas are going to require more in-depth discussion. And between now and then, staff will hold area-specific meetings to do a deeper dive on specific topics. Staff will also provide additional opportunities for online engagement to gain a better understanding of the community's concerns and vision around the 2020 Sustainability Climate Action Plan, as well as provide an opportunity for community members who can't attend the meetings to provide their input. And once we have gathered all the community input on the goals and key action and refined the goals and key actions, then AECOM will perform an impact analysis, as we referred to earlier. And the impact analysis will detail the cost, expected greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and sustainability benefits. Staff will prepare a council study session in early fall to discuss the 2019 greenhouse gas inventory, the business as usual forecast, the results of the impact analysis, and the summary of the community input received to date. And at that point, we'll be able to give you more data and targets that you've been wanting to see tonight. We hope to get council guidance on the potential goals and key actions so that at the 2020 Sustainable Living Climate Action Plan Summit, hopefully in early fall, the community can give, can help staff prioritize which of the key actions we need to do to get us to our 80 by 30 goal and other proposed goals. And while the 2020 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan is being drafted, AECOM will concurrently be preparing the California Environmental Quality Act environmental documents so that there will be a companion sequoia review of the 2020 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. And we hope to come back to council around this time next year with a finished 2020 Sustainable Living and Climate Action Plan, hopefully for your approval. So just to give you a quick snapshot of what we're asking AECOM to help us with, AECOM will create a citywide greenhouse gas emissions inventory for three years, including providing a more accurate methodology for calculating our transportation-related emissions. And we'll be including airport emissions for the first time, we haven't done that before, so that we can comply with new reporting protocols. As well as to comply with new SEQA guidelines adopted last year, the city will need to make a series of decisions about how to change current transportation impact analysis from measuring impact to drivers and shift to measuring the impact of driving through the use of VMT or vehicle miles traveled. City will need to adopt the VMT methodology and thresholds for SEQA purposes by July 1st of 2020. And staff will be discussing this with council in more depth at a later date. We don't have time tonight. AECOM will also calculate a business as usual forecast to show what emissions reductions will be achieved if we don't add any new policies or actions. And most importantly, AECOM will conduct an impact analysis on the draft actions to estimate the greenhouse gas reductions of the proposed actions, estimated costs, the additional sustainability co-benefits, such as improved local air quality, preservation of habitat, reduced cost of living, or even reduced socioeconomic disparities. And the results of the impact analysis will help us further refine the goals and key actions needed to get to our 80 by 30 target. So as we mentioned earlier, 80 by 30 is our overarching sustainability goal. But we have several equally important goals in the following areas. We have a sustainability leadership team, which has representatives from six departments and provides strategy and direction for sustainability strategy implementation. And as we mentioned before, these are the team leads for the seven Sustainability and Climate Action Plan areas. They manage the corresponding working groups for each area and are also part of the sustainability leadership team. They're all still on the line tonight to answer any questions you might have about specific SCAP areas. So here is our 2020 to 2021 Sustainability Work Plan. The full plan is in your packet, so we're not going to go through this very dense graphic. And instead, I'm just going to highlight a few of the priority project examples. So some of the priority projects for 2020 include developing and implementing a utilities electrification work plan, adopting a transportation demand management ordinance, ensuring adequate and diverse electric vehicle charging infrastructure, implementing the city's first green stormwater infrastructure plan, developing a sea-level rise adaptation plan, exploring programs and policies to provide local carbon storage and other environmental benefits through the urban forest, begin to enforce the disposable foodware ordinance and the deconstruction ordinance to reduce rates, and to provide multiple opportunities for community input on the 2020 Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update. And a lot of these priority projects may be delayed due to the current pandemic. So our recommended motion for tonight is for council to accept the 2020 to 2021 Sustainability Work Plan. We thank you for your time. And once again, we are all on the line to answer your questions.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. I'd like to go to the public for any comments on this issue. So please do raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this issue, and the city clerk will take your comments in turn. Each of you will have two minutes. Beth, if you want to help me out with this, please.
Arthur Keller, it's your turn to speak. If you can go ahead, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. So firstly, we should implement a solar investment access ordinance that means that if you put solar panels on your roof, somebody can't build a building next to you to shade it. That will destroy your investment in your solar panels. We should look at the amount of reduction in greenhouse gases just from the incineration retirement, that wasn't calculated. Also, with transportation demand management, we've had a lot of these programs in transportation demand management, but they have not actually been enforced. So we should start gathering them, inventorying them, and enforcing them. With respect to vehicle miles traveled versus, I think we should look at the amount of vehicles' miles traveled that are decreased or increased based on adding an additional person living in Palo Alto. And also look in the vehicles' miles traveled based on reducing a job in Palo Alto or taking several jobs and converting them to partly telecommuting. And with respect to level of service, the city's comprehensive plan also does include level of service, which deals with local congestion within the city of Palo Alto as an issue to be considered along with vehicle miles traveled. And with respect to level of service, that deals with local congestion. And local congestion creates pollution within our city, both greenhouse gases and criteria pollutants. So we should basically retain level of service and do that in parallel with vehicle miles traveled as our comprehensive plan describes. Also, with respect, we should basically promote integrated pest management by providing input in utility inserts, as well as in reach out to homeowners associations and particularly condo associations. And in terms of our zero-waste goal, we should promote composting with respect to our businesses and multifamily houses within Palo Alto, because I think that that will help a lot. Thank you very much.
David Page, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to talk to you once again. I read through the SCAP update and I sent in to each of you seven pages via email about my rebuttal to the update. It's, the subject line in the email is "SCAP Feedback by David Page." I hope you get a chance to look at it. As I mentioned earlier, a good chunk of it is about the budget. And it includes a whole bunch of different items that I don't have time to get into here tonight. But in general, I'd like to say the SCAP update is an embarrassment. And there's so little that Palo Alto has done and so much that it's taken credit for, given the nature of the problem and the magnitude of the consequences that are headed in our direction. It's easy to criticize, it's easy to throw blame around, it's easy to use words like embarrassment. And I'm not intending to single out anyone, we're all in this together. You know, all of us create pollution. And what I'm hoping is the city can do something which wouldn't cost much money at all, which is simply to tell the truth about the nature of the problem, the consequences, the causes. This can be easily done by, not by reinventing the wheel, but just by going to what the California Air Resources Board has already put together, which is their Carbon Footprint Calculator that you could find at Cool California. Thank you very much. I hope you read my feedback letter, and thank you very much again.
I believe we have another David. Is that right, Beth?
David Cole, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes.
Yes, hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for hearing me this evening and making this available. With all due respect to city staff, I've worked with them for many years now. If we look at the greenhouse gas emissions chart, bar chart, we'll see that it's been flatlined for the last seven years, basically. And while the staff gives lots of great glowing numbers, they don't relate it back to reductions that need to happen each year, which is what councilmembers Philsef and McCormick talked about. We really need to have that kind of reporting based on the goal that we need to get to, not relative to our neighboring cities. Because this is an absolute goal. It was set by good science and great models, just like the way that we're beating the coronavirus. We need to pay attention to the science here and act accordingly. What this would look like is we would have a number like, if we do the numbers back of the envelope, that's 2,300 heat pump water heaters that need to be changed out each year between now and 2030. It's 1,400 heat pump space heating systems. It's about 8,600 EVs that need to become, that need to be adopted each year. So we really need to step up to the task if we're going to address this. And every year that we wait, this becomes much more difficult with the plans outlined by staff at present. No new programs come in line for another year. So I ask that the staff be truthful with their numbers and that the council ask staff to give real solutions to the problem at hand. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Cole. So those are all the hands raised we see right now. If you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand quickly, and we will try to incorporate your comments.
Mayor, I have a Shannon McEntee.
Let's move to Ms. McEntee, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. I left some written comments as I read the SCAP online. And I thank you for managing to do that online. I had a thought since then that I wanted to mention. I live in a four-story, 55-unit condominium building. And we don't have any electric chargers here. So I was thinking that would be another thing to add to the, to future plans is to require or incentivize adding electric charging stations in older buildings. I think that would be not only an encouragement, but it would help people that would like to have one. And then I also just wanted to ask you, don't lose steam on this. The coronavirus is a huge distraction, but nothing can be more important than this environmental, all of these environmental issues. So thank you for your service for the city and for staying focused. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And those are all the commenters I see so far.
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Let's conclude public comment on this item and come back to council. 9:00 PM, we're scheduled for this item 8:30 or 9:15, and we're scheduled this item 8:30 to 9:30. So just want to remind all of that. So I'm happy to welcome questions, comments, and motions. The first hand I see is council memberiness.
So I understand the last speaker who spoke about distraction. I think that will be easy to get distracted. But at the same time, I think we need to stay realistic. This community may not look the same in June or July or even a year from now. We could be dramatically different. It was very sad to hear Dan Gordon tonight coming to say this was the final straw. I knew that he had already been having difficulty, but it's very sad to hear a very classic downtown restaurant is leaving. I am wondering if this plan isn't a little like losing weight? Where you start out with a big bang and you lose all that weight, and then forevermore you're trying to lose that five or 10 pounds. And I think maybe we need to look ahead and say, how do we get the final, how do we get that final result that we've been after? And I think Eric and Allison addressed that a bit earlier. The woman who just spoke about EV charges, I have thought that for so long. I don't know what our incentive can be to get them into apartment Um, I don't know what our incentive can be to get them into apartment buildings, but if you live in an apartment building without a charger, I think you're not going to be as tempted to buy a car that's an electric vehicle. So I would urge us to put this on for next year. Um, as far as the Bay Area Equality Management District that I serve on, I would say, take a look at their Cool California. That's, it's, it's a good guide to have to continue forward. Also, um, the air board has a, another goal that they have set, which is to be diesel-free by 73. So if you look at any charts, you will see that it's cars, trucks, and so forth that make all the difference in, in our air quality, especially as, as I mentioned earlier, as you look out now, it's really, uh, absolutely amazing and a beautiful blue sky. And then reducing our gas by half is going to be a, a true challenge. And while we've agreed to go to all-electric houses, that's going to take some period of time. We don't overturn, we overturn so few houses in Palo Alto every year that, um, for us to really have that happen, you know, sort of whole hog by half, we would, we would have to dramatically change the, the gas that we're using. So with that, um, thank you, Mayor Fine, very much, and I'll move us along.
Is that a motion or you're just ending your comments?
Well, I'm glad to make it a motion to accept this. I don't want to shortchange anyone else, but if anyone's interested in seconding the motion and therefore redo speaking to it, I would move that motion.
Okay. So council member Niss has moved the staff recommendation. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you, council member Tanaka. Uh, council member Niss, do you want to speak to your motion?
No, I think I've spoken to it. I, I, I would agree, you know, I wouldn't be quite as harsh as David Cole was tonight, but I do think we, we need to move things along. And the interesting part of it is, you know, it's, it's all of us that move this along. It, it isn't staff and it isn't community members who speak every so often. It's really us. That's the hardest part.
Thank you. And council member Tanaka.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think council member Niss is, we kind of said it, the things I was going to say, but, um, I think, you know, climate change is real. It's, it's very important. We have to make some progress on it, um, but there are constraints. So I think that we want to do it as efficiently as we can.
Thank you, sir. Um, I see a hand from council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, I guess I want to start with slide eight, Ms. Long, if you could please, the process, just so I understand where we are and what it is you're expecting from us. And, and while you're finding that, um, so I heard the description of smart goals and actions and I heard that AECom will do the impact analysis in Q3, um, but I only see us here now. So can you help me understand what, um, goals and actions, who is going to choose these goals and actions and when?
Uh, Christine, would you like to take a crack at that?
Sure. Um, so it's a combination of, um, so after AECom does the impact analysis, um, we're going to present the results to council for your guidance on what direction we need to take, what are the hard choices we need to make in terms of, um, you know, do we need to have mandates or what have you to get to the goals we need to, to, the targets we need to reach the goal? Um, and then we're going to bring it to the community, um, at the, uh, 2020 S cap update summit, um, to help us decide on the final goals and key actions.
Okay. So this is the council's only opportunity before AECom starts their work to provide appropriate goals and, uh, direction on goals and actions. Is that right?
No.
In the process, I'm sorry, Christine, I'm just going to say, in the process, we've laid out as, um, as formal meetings with the council, that, that is the case. If you'd like to, uh, direct us to come back again, we'd be fine with doing that, I believe.
Okay. That's helpful. Um, and I may come back with a friendly amendment on that. Um, uh, sorry, I do, I do have a fair number of questions on this. It's such an important topic and, um, and, and we haven't seen it in, in quite some time. Um, perhaps it'd be helpful if I go in order with the, um, areas. How about that? Um, so I'll just whip through them as quickly as possible, just in terms of goals and actions that I think would be appropriate based on, um, you know, uh, being part of the UA, you know, being the assistant liaison and the liaison to the UAC and attending the, um, electrification workshop and, and various number of meetings with people who know a whole heck of a lot more about this than I do. Um, in terms of energy, um, I would like staff to look at on-bill financing. Um, I would like to understand if that is possible or not and when and, and why not? Um, and establishing numbers of heat pump water heaters, those are, those are all things that I think would be appropriate. Um, in terms of mobility, uh, interesting, uh, suggestion from someone about work from home days, now that so many people are demonstrating they are able to work from home. Really interesting to think about that, not just from a Mandy, but also from, you know, way we could do social norming or encouraging of that. Um, the ideas around, um, electric vehicles, I mean, it's really been clear from the beginning, um, that this is one of the ways we can turn it over most quickly, even more quickly than water heaters, right? Which are harder, um, to make change with. So whether it's, um, you know, a task force, um, I think in all of these areas, what I'd like to encourage, instead of making incremental progress, I want us to look at the destination and move backwards. And that's the part that I think is missing. Kudos to all the people who went before us and all the work that has been done, right? We do have a lot to be proud of. And also we have every reason to be concerned we aren't going to hit the mark unless we look at what it is and move backward instead of sort of, you know, looking at, well, what, what's the one change we could make this year? That's just an overall comment. Um, very excited about the One Water strategy. I think that will really move it from being part and parcel of different departments into being something that we can think about holistically. Um, sea level rise, we need the plan. Um, we just need it. Um, is it, it's not entirely clear to me when we get the sea level rise plan. Would someone be able to update me on that?
Uh, sure. I, I think in Christine's presentation earlier, she mentioned the RFP that was done. So, uh, we've negotiated a contract that also happens to be with AECom that we're planning to bring to the council, um, sometime in May or June.
And, and when would we get the results of that?
The idea was to have the plan, uh, roughly at the end of this calendar year. That may have slipped a little.
Okay. Still nervous about that, only because I live in that blue area, right? Not just that, but that's one of the reasons. Um, and then in terms of the environmental sustainability, I think that is an area we're on the forefront. Um, council member Niss spoke about the trees earlier and green, um, stormwater infrastructure. So I think we're making appropriate movements there, but, um, uh, and then with respect to zero waste, you know, we've spent an awful lot of time on that as a council and, and made a lot of changes. Um, uh, but again, it's a small number in, when you look at the overall part. Um, so those are all the areas. And again, my, my general thought is we should be focused more on what we're trying to get to and work our way back than making incremental progress. Um, I did want to ask about the webinar workshop. Um, I received that email. It was a little unclear to me if, but it looks like you asked people to register for every one of them. Um, I wonder what some of the lessons learned were that you did. First of all, kudos for creative attempt to, uh, to, to share information and get input, but what were some of the lessons learned? Because we may have to be doing this for some period of time on this particular topic.
Christine, do you have some insight on that?
Sure. Um, so some of the lessons learned were that, um, it's always better to have, uh, the webinars on demand so people can watch them anytime they want. Um, we chose to go with go-to webinar for several reasons, but, um, the limitations of go-to webinar are they give you two choices for pre-recorded webinars. Either you can show the recording as is, um, and that allows the user to pause, rewind, and forward, but then there's no opportunity for, um, feedback. The chat box doesn't work, the polling features don't work. Or you can have the recorded webinar set up as how we did it for this time, which is called a simulated live webinar where, um, you can put responses in the chat box, you can answer polls, and all of your, um, comments are recorded, but you can't pause or rewind or forward. So in the future, I think what we're going to do instead is just do the recorded version where you can pause, rewind, and forward and then have a link to like a survey or online questionnaire to provide your feedback instead. It's a little clunkier, but a lot of the feedback we got was people wish they could pause and rewind and forward. Um, some of the other feedback we got was, um, uh, to be more clear about the length of each webinar. Um, we did mention it, um, in the invite, but if you chose, if you choose the simulated live webinar option, it doesn't show you the time remaining. So again, if we go to just the flat-out recorded version, it shows the time remaining. Um, and, um, some of the other feedback we got was, um, that, uh, oh, that they liked that we gave them the presentation slide, um, and that we should continue to provide more opportunities like this to have the pre-recorded, um, working out some of the glitches.
Great. Thanks so much for that. It was interesting to see the big drop off from the people who started to the people who continued. So, um, you know, any other survey information you have, I'm sure we'll, we'll help improve it for the next time. Um, so I guess what I'd like to do is make, um, a friendly amendment to the maker and seconder, um, that a, um, an interim report be brought back to council, um, before AECom does the impact analysis of goals and key actions. And if staff wants to help me refine that, um, again, my objective would be for us to have an opportunity to go from this high level down into the details a little bit more, um, so that we have an opportunity to give you suggestions about these goals so that AECom can work on the actions. So if, is, is staff comfortable? Yeah, let me just make sure staff's comfortable with this.
Uh, yes, this is Brad. I think we're comfortable with this.
Okay. At least it's understandable. All right. Um, council member Niss?
Yes, I think that's actually a really good addition.
Council member Tanaka?
I'll accept it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I look forward to seeing this again and, um, you know, given the number of details, um, well done to try to keep us going on that, but there is, there is so much more to do. Thank you.
Council member Cormac, uh, I, I'm hearing, I just wanted to see if we can get a little more specific. Babe, I, Brad, I heard you say not by the end of June, but are you thinking maybe by August or September? Is that what I heard? Or words in your mouth? That's what I thought I heard.
I don't think I said that. When I answered a question about, um, when we would be bringing something back, it was the sea level rise plan.
Sorry.
So I'm not, I'm not sure yet what the timing would be on bringing these, um, actions and goals back to council before AECom's impact analysis.
Can you make a guess?
June would be likely, I think.
So I think that, um, not to embellish your, your, um, suggestion, Allison, but I, I think having some kind of goal in there would, wouldn't hurt.
Right. So perhaps before the end of the council session in June, before we go on break?
Yes. Unless it's impossible to do, Brad, and it may be because of outside indicators, but, um, I think that would be a laudable goal.
Okay. Amended. Thank you.
So all council member Cormac? Thank you. Okay. Next I see Vice Mayor Boyes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this discussion. Uh, I think we're on the right track. A couple of quick questions. Um, so my understanding is that, uh, so AECom will, will track like what we achieve. And so a lot of what we're asking for in terms of where we are in terms of metrics will be coming out of that work. Is that correct?
I, I describe it as two kind of separate things, types of work they're doing for us. So one is developing the inventory, uh, as Christine mentioned for 2019. We came to you this time with the Earth Day report, but we didn't have the updated numbers because AECom is going to do that for us. So, um, that's a little simpler than the task of saying, what are the key actions and new programs that we should evaluate? And are we confident that those can get us to the 80 by 30 goal? And that's what we were talking about in terms of like a further council review of those actions.
And one of the speakers asked about level of service as like an indication of congestion and local pollution. Are, are you going to bring that up with AECom? Is it just to focus on VMT? Um, are we also looking at level of service?
I, I think I'll ask Sylvia Starlack from the Office of Transportation to answer that question.
Hi, uh, council member. Thank you for the question. Um, the comprehensive plan requires us to, uh, well, state law requires us to convert our SEQA impact analysis for transportation from LOS to VMT analysis for projects that are large enough that require that, that, that require a SEQA analysis. At the same time, our comprehensive plan requires us to use level of service analysis for local transportation impacts. So we will be doing the things that Arthur Keller asked us to do. Um, we will be retaining LOS for local analysis and we will be using VMT for, um, SEQA impact analysis.
For this greenhouse gas analysis for the S cap?
Um, AECom will also, so AE, AECom's, um, sub-consultant will be working with us on the VMT conversion, conversion of our SEQA analysis to VMT. And they will also be working with us on, uh, conducting the greenhouse gas emission inventory from transportation sources.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Sounds good. Um, so I just had a few thoughts. So, um, you know, I've been doing a lot of reading on, on this area. And I think it was, it was a year ago that renewable energy passed, um, coal in the US, you know? And so, you know, like I was saying earlier in the Earth Day comments, you know, the energy landscape has really changed a lot in the last 10 years. Um, the, I think the world record right now for, for power was the solar plant in Saudi Arabia that was at a dollar eighty a kilowatt hour. Um, and so we have this amazing clean energy. You know, the next part of that is batteries. Battery prices have fallen a lot, but, you know, we've got more to go there. And so my earlier questions about thinking about the future of energy as we think about this S cap plan over the next 10 years and beyond that really, is, you know, what can Palo Alto do to kind of stay ahead of the trend? Um, we, we're currently carbon neutral. We could go, we could really go carbon free, um, if we, if we think about it and we dream, dream about it. Um, and, you know, as you play these scenarios out, some people are predicting that we're going to have essentially free energy or very cheap energy. And, um, you know, how do we think about our utility and managing in that, in that kind of environment? Um, you know, if, if energy becomes like the long-distance phone call, right? You used to worry about making a long-distance phone call, what it was going to cost, and you don't do that anymore. Um, and so I think, you know, we, we have a very interesting role to play, um, as a city with our own utility and thinking about, um, government regulation in that environment. And so to pick up on what some of my colleagues have been saying about thinking about the big picture and the goal, you know, it's clear right now, it's transportation, it's the biggest bucket has been. Um, and I think, I think we would really need to focus on EV and keep driving that adoption rate up in the city. You know, and we're going to add in the electrified heating and cooling for homes and businesses, uh, but a really strong focus on electric vehicles, I think it's going to go a long way. Um, you know, the city itself should be aggressive in terms of our fleet, our shuttles. Um, but, you know, I think one of the ideas I'd really like to see us explore as we work to this plan is thinking about, you know, a big program, a media campaign, incentives, anything we can do where we would say that nearly all replacement cars citywide are electric. Um, I think that's a big goal. Um, I think it would get attention. I think it's something we should try. Um, so thank you for the report. Thank you for the motion. Um, and I had- So thank you for the report. Thank you for the motion. And I'm looking forward to the summit, hopefully in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't see hand raises from either colleagues. So hit the raise hand button if you want to speak. Great. Councilmember Phil Seth?
I think I already spoke and I'm looking forward to seeing the results.
That's it? Great, thank you. Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, so just a few quick questions from staff. And I think some of the speakers mentioned this and you guys probably saw, saw it written in, but, you know, with this shutdown, a lot of people have experienced that working from home. And for some people, it's actually been okay, right? Especially people who can work remotely, like software engineers and things like that. What has staff done or what is staff thinking in regards to being able to sustain some of that momentum? Like I think Liz talked about how we have like, you know, these incredibly blue skies. And I, I seen pictures of my hometown in Los Angeles where I grew up, where it's like, you know, total smog everywhere. And it's like amazing right now. So what's, what's the, you know, what are, what are some of the thoughts about incentives around trying to encourage at least some portion that can to keep on going as they're doing right now in terms of working from home?
Well, the city's remote work policy, you know, there, there have been discussions about this in the past, even before the COVID-19 emergency, about how that could be effective, both in terms of productivity of employees that could telework. And frankly, the sustainability and greenhouse gas impacts of that as well. So I think that'll be ongoing. I, for me, I think it's really interesting and notable that we've got such a, a large proportion of city employees who kind of had to instantly shift to this mode of telework and altogether really as, as multiple teams were, you know, learn to use the different tools that are, that are helping them to, to still be productive. And so I, I think that's going to speak a lot to the way some work still happens in the future. And probably even more so in private industry where remote work was more of a regular factor to, to begin with. I, you know, I think we're seeing across the board that in companies and, and industry areas where that wasn't so much the norm practice, it's been adopted successfully now and is likely to continue. And probably even absent anything the city necessarily does as part of our sustainability plan, I, I would expect that we're going to see some significant changes in a positive way that result from that eventually, once the recovery has happened.
Yeah, thank you. And I applaud you guys for making that transition because I know it's tough. It's, you have to go from more like face time, how much face time you have to, you know, what you actually got done. So. But I guess I wasn't really asking regards to the city, although it was very interesting to hear about it. What I was asking about is like the private companies, right? Other incentives that we could put in place that would encourage people to, you know, I, I think some people talked about a couple of days a week or whatever, work from home, right? Because, you know, that's, that's like total elimination of greenhouse gas for at least that day when they work from home. So I don't know if you guys started thinking about it, but if not, maybe it's something to start thinking about.
Thank you. That's a good comment.
Okay. And then you guys talked a little bit about it in the report, but, you know, transportation is still one of the largest sources of greenhouse gas for us, right? I mean, does homes still have one and, and offices also have some, but, but the, the transportation is one of the biggest. And so how do you, how does this mesh together with the bike? Because we're trying to also improve the bike, bikeability, right? You know, we had a recent death of a middle school kid biking, right? By car or truck, whatever. And so how does this mesh together? Because of course you promote better biking structure than, you know, you reduce the transportation greenhouse gas, right? And so I guess I'm just trying to think about how that fits together.
Yes, I'll ask Sylvia Starlak to speak to that. I'll just say, it is very interesting that, that when we look at the 80 by 30 greenhouse gas goal in terms of transportation, we've got, kind of got two linked things. We've got an overall mobility, trying to do things that reduce vehicle miles traveled, while at the same time the shift to electrification that reduces the greenhouse gas impact of each vehicle mile traveled on average. But Sylvia, can you expand on that?
Yes, thank you for the question. The, the S cap or the, the, the key actions that we are working with right now have to do with a multi-pronged approach towards reducing single occupancy vehicle commuting and SOV VMT in town. So things like funding the TMA. We'll talk about transit at some other day, but things like building out our bike plan. The more you make it safer for folks to bike in town, the more likely they are to use that, that mode. There's a, there are many things we can do. I can talk for hours about what we could do around bikes, but I won't. But a very big part of the S cap policies, I think, will be around helping people find other modes. In addition to the push for EVs. The, just to get back a little bit around, to talk about telework, the TDM ordinance that we are going to be working on coming up in the end of the year, hopefully. Will address, can address some of the telework issues that you were talking about before. We are also looking into micro mobility options. I know they are important to Councilmember Tanaka. So, you know, we are looking at all of the possibilities.
Well, one, one program you may want to look at if you haven't already is, I think Stanford Research Park, or maybe Stanford University, I forgot which one, has a program where they actually pay you if you bike to work, which I thought was really interesting. And so those are kind of incentives. I know money is tight right now, so there's only so much we could do. But it's interesting to see how you can use dollars to actually make a tangible impact on reducing the greenhouse gas. And you've actually, because people have to actually track it, they have to use Strava or something like that to track their, that they're actually, you know, not driving. They're actually biking or something.
Yeah, the city hired me from that program.
Oh, okay, there you go. So, you know, you know about the program. So anyways.
We have our own version of that program, but I think we pay like a dollar a day, right? And it's not enough to make you change your mode.
Yeah, but anyways, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, because it's, it seems so, because transportation is such a big chunk of our greenhouse gas. You know, even small improvements on that really has a big effect because that's a big chunk of our emissions, right? And so, and so anyways, I, it sounds like you already know about it. But I, I just, I think these programs are very, very linked together closely. And that's why I'm, I'm, I think it's important to, yeah, anyways, I appreciate the call. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ku.
Thank you. So it's along Greg's, I mean, Councilmember Tanaka's questions about telecommuting. So with our shelter in place, order in place right now, I was wondering, is there any tracking of the GIGHG levels at this time?
No, there's, there's nothing specific that we're, we're doing to track them right now. You know, obviously for our employees, greenhouse gas emissions from their commutes have dropped dramatically. I did just check recently for the city fleet in terms of fuel usage, and I, I think we've seen drops on the order of 30%. But of course, a, a lot of our fuel usage has to do with, with police and fire responses as well, which of course are ongoing.
How about the people who commute into Palo Alto from other employment? Are we?
That's down dramatically as, as well, but, but not something that we've, we've tried to calculate.
I mean, would it be wise to kind of have that baseline? Or are you just following the 19 numbers?
It, it's a, it's a hard number to, to come up with. Essentially, that model for the number of vehicle miles that are traveled into and out of Palo Alto for commutes is, is part of that analysis that AECOM subcontractor is doing for us.
Well, let me just add, I know we've been talking about it at staff, so we should, or among staff. So I think we will certainly want to check in with, whether it be Bachman or Quality Management District, BTA, MTC, the various regional agencies that have these specific areas of responsibility to find out if they are doing any real time updates to their, their actual data collection to, to see what we can glean from this really unique experience.
Yes, thank you. That, that, that would be great to take advantage, you know, this opportunity that is here. But also, did I hear correctly that you said that you'd be measuring the emissions from the airport as well, Palo Alto Airport?
No, we have not been measuring impacts. I'll ask Christine to jump in. I, I think, I, I think I'm remembering that we've added something new for that in AECOM's contract for the upcoming inventory.
Okay, just confirm that I actually heard it.
Yes, that's correct. We have not included airport emissions in past inventory. But the new protocols for greenhouse gas emissions inventories requires us to, from here on out, include the airport emissions. So starting with our 2018 greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we will be including airport emissions.
And Christine, this is only Palo Alto Airport, or will we also be tracking the airplanes that are going over our skies to San Francisco and San Jose now?
No, just Palo Alto Airport.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ku. So a couple of questions and maybe an amendment or two, friendly amendment. So a number of speakers have raised the idea of on-bill financing for residents and businesses, kind of providing them with an optionality to invest in their own, you know, climate saving initiatives. What, what are we doing in terms of that?
Christine Tam, would, would you like to answer that question? We also have Assistant Director Jonathan Abenshine from the Utilities Department. And whichever you, of you, I think is, has, is closest to that could answer.
Thank you, Mayor Fine, for the question. I'll take a step at answering that question. So the utilities billing system currently cannot support an on-bill financing program. However, we are in the process of upgrading the utility billing system. And we expect that the upgrade will be completed over the next couple of years. It does take a little bit of time to upgrade the billing system because that's also tying with the city's other IT infrastructure upgrade, including the AMI upgrade. So as I, as I remember correctly, it will be at least another two or three years before the billing system, the, the billing system upgrade will be complete. And at that time, we will then be able to offer on-bill financing.
Okay. So I mean this respectfully, but I, I think we need a little bit more options in terms of that. And I'm, I'm wondering, are, are there opportunities for us to accelerate that? Because as, as we look at what some of our citizens are asking us for, and as we look at what we're asking our citizens to invest in, on-bill financing really makes a lot of sense. And it's kind of leveraging existing resources. So i- is there any way for us to accelerate that in terms of providing that, that ability sooner than a couple of years?
We can certainly explore other types of off-bill financing programs. And we can definitely look at different options.
Okay.
The options not feasible at this point.
Thank you. I'm not going to put that in a motion or an amendment, but I do want to stress to staff. I, I, I think this is a good place for us to go. And as, as we've seen with some other programs in Palo Alto and other cities, it's something we need to pursue. So if we can accelerate that, that would be appreciated. Next area I want to talk a little bit about is transportation and single occupancy vehicles. So a- as I look at it and some of the accomplishments we've made, I think they're significant. I think a lot of them have been in the range of providing carrots or positive alternatives to driving, which, which are totally legitimate, and we should do that. I'm wondering at what point does the city consider, you know, to use the term sticks to single occupancy driving? Are we looking at things like paid parking downtown? Are we looking at congestion pricing? I understand in this environment, those are really weird questions that may not be applicable. But at what point do we begin to evaluate the other side of the coin there?
Sylvia, can you answer, please?
Hi, thank you for the question. We are, we have on our work plan to look at paid parking downtown. Congestion pricing is new and we could explore that. You're right, most of our, most of our alternatives are positive alternatives. I think parking is the big one that gives us the most, that, where we have the most leeway, frankly. You know, I did come from the Stanford TDM program, and the reason that program works so well is because the parking is priced correctly.
Well, let me, let me add, Mayor, I think as you're suggesting in terms of, you know, ways that this process, the process of developing our update to the S cap can be helpful to advance things like that. Whether it be going full on in terms of a, a program or just even experimenting with things like we've, in some of our conversations joked about ice-free days. As in, if you want to park on University Avenue, one day a week is only for electric vehicles. And, you know, various kinds of experiments like that. So as we think about this work plan for the S cap, this might be a good opportunity for us to explore those kinds of creative test cases.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in terms of like paid parking especially, we don't have to be terribly creative, right? This isn't, this isn't like new frontier for many cities. A lot of places have done this. And, and one anecdotal share, I spoke recently with the former city manager of Redwood City, who was in charge of the city during the last recession. And he said, one of the smartest things they did is implement paid parking during the recession of 2008, 2009. There was low volume. They were able to implement it at low prices. And when the economy came back, people acclimatized to it much better. And so I, I just put that out there as kind of, you know, is there a silver lining to some of this? I mean, I'm still absolutely struck every time I go downtown and how, how empty it is. It's really quite sad. But I, I wonder if there are opportunities in that. And then the last question for staff is, we've had a lot of folks asking us, you know, some of this, this progress in the S cap is good, we need to do more work, all understandable. And kind of a question driving at our current theme there is like, what, what, what does our progress in our future look like if we stop counting carbon offsets? And does that need to be additional direction? I understand why we've done them. It's a cost-effective solution to bring down our, our GHG emissions. That's fair. But there is a little bit of kind of accounting business involved in that. And, and I wonder what our progress and our situation looks like going forward if we are not to count those. And I'm wondering if staff has any thoughts there.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a, a good question. And yes, we've got a lot of feedback on that. You, you might have noticed that in your staff report, in the chart where we showed reduction, it led with a header that mentioned the, I think it's the 56% decrease. Then after input we got from a number of members of the public in the presentation that Christine gave tonight, we actually led with the lower number. And so, you know, we've been saying for a while, the carbon offsets are really a bridge. But I, I think it's a valid point. And we understood the point that we don't want the public to see that higher number and feel like we're really a lot closer to our 80% goal than we are.
Okay. And again, just to, to add a bit there, not unlike the issue of parking pricing. Okay. And again, just to, to add a bit there, not unlike the issue of, uh, parking pricing, the gas pricing, uh, is also, uh, a lever that we really have just barely started to, um, tackle. And so I, I think as, again, potentially as a part of this S cap update, the question of what role, not only the offsets, but the charge and the, the use of the funds, um, you know, in a longer term basis, uh, could be most beneficial in terms of advancing or whether specifically electrification or any other S cap calls.
Okay, understood. Um, so I would appreciate if we can continue doing that kind of dual book accounting. Um, but I, I really think we do need to tack towards not counting those offsets as, as much as we have in the past. Just a piece of feedback. Um, those are my questions and comments. I don't see anything else from my colleagues. So we can go back to the motion. Thank you very much. Um, let's please vote on this motion if, unless there's anything else. Let's start with Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yep.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Myself is yes. Councilmember Niss. I think you're on the mute list.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
And Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so that passes unanimously. Um, thank you very much to staff. Thank you for the very large team, which, which brought this forward. I know it's a lot of work and kind of encapsulating it in, in, you know, an hour, hour and a half is a lot of work. So we, we truly appreciate that. That finishes our action items for the night. Uh, next we move on to Councilmember Questions, Comments and Announcements. I'm just going to go alphabetically again, uh, to see if folks have anything to say or, or share. Uh, Councilmember Cormac. Council, Vice Mayor DuBois. Tom, sorry.
Sorry, uh, flipped, uh, yeah, I just wanted to say I'm, uh, a new block preparedness coordinator. It's really easy. Uh, so I recommend it to all of you guys.
Nice. Um, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Nope.
Uh, Councilmember Niss.
Yeah, there are a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, in addition to those blue skies, has anyone else noticed there aren't as many planes in those blue skies? It's really rather stunning. Uh, have you not noticed that?
I have noticed it.
If you haven't, go walk the Baylands or, or, or some, someplace else because, um, I, I think that's astonishing. So I want us to reflect on the emptiness right now. The skies are not as full. The air is clearer. The downtown is very sad to look at, but very empty. Um, a couple of results of this have been, as Councilmember Cormac said, the drivers have, um, increased their speed rather markedly, which is, which is, I, I wouldn't have expected that would happen. And secondly, have you ever noticed so many dogs in your life? I think people must have gone out and bought dogs because they are everywhere. There's, there's even a, a kind of bad joke of a dog up very high at a cabinet saying, please, no more walks today. I've done all I can do. So on a lighter note, good night, everybody.
There's going to be a lot of separation anxiety from these puppies when we all go back to work. Um, Councilmember Ku.
Uh, just congratulations to Vice Mayor DuBois and I agree with Councilmember Niss. There is definitely less airplanes in the air, but the airplanes that are flying over are flying lower. So just my two cents. Have a good night.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, for, Lydia, uh, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I know that, uh, the city manager asked, uh, all of us for recommendations of people to be on the roundtable. So I really appreciate, um, Ed, you looking so quickly on that. I think I'm, I'm getting emails from people almost daily going bankrupt. So it's, 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 the urge is really, really, uh, critical. I mean, this is spoken a lot of, many times that downtown Calab, I mean, almost everywhere is, of course, we don't, it's all shut down. Um, so it's pretty devastating. So I think it's, it's to kind of line the ball. I think we need to move quickly before people decide like Dan who's, say, hey, I'm tossing the towel, I'm not going to do it anymore. Um, so we, we need to move quickly. And, you know, the, the other thing is, um, you mentioned about the minimum wage and, I mean, I've, I've heard, I've talked to a lot of restaurant owners. A lot of them say the same thing and I wonder, like, is that something that maybe we should have some flexibility on because it's, it's, to actually run a restaurant, it's largely labor, that's the cost and, um, yeah, it was just some dots I've been picking up, maybe stop to think about the stuff as part of your roundtable, part of the discussion. But I think we need to move quickly if we want people to come back. If we don't want this to be a permanent downturn. My last thought is, um, is, uh, so I think it's great that staff is not going to force the, the fee on paper bags. I know this is a small topic, but I, I know some people really care about it. So I, maybe, um, uh, Ed, uh, you guys could, you guys do this great, you know, COVID-19 update all the time. Maybe you guys can include that somewhere so that retailers, should they want to give relief to people who really, you know, really are hardened down on their luck, don't have to pay the extra couple of dollars. And I, I know for most of you guys, you guys are very, you know, this kind of stuff is like nothing to you guys. But I know for a lot of people in Palo Alto that live here, this, this, this is meaningful dollars. And, um, and so I think we want to just be kind of, um, empathetic to that. And so if, if retailers do want to, um, uh, you know, nickel and dime, not, not wanting to nickel and dime people on these paper bags, let them, right? So if, if, I don't know if that's possible for you to put this part of your guys' update so that people see that. Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Um, just, just one or two comments. So one, um, I do want to remind folks, I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago before this whole crisis, that California HSR is releasing a series of EIRs on some other upcoming segments. Some of those are now live. I encourage you to go check them out and comment on them as necessary. Um, and the other thing is just something I've, I've kind of noticed from a lot of residents and talking with our city staff. Um, if, if you are a resident or a business or somebody visiting Palo Alto and you see behavior that does not conform with county or city rules, um, please call our police non-emergency line. And if somebody can repeat that number after I finish speaking.
Two, four, one, three.
There you go. From the city manager. Thank you so much, Ed. Um, that's a really important way. Please do not confront folks if you see them violating a known behavior. Just, just call our police non-emergency line. The professionals will take care of it. We, we do need that community information, but we, we don't want folks interviewing themselves. Um, if there is nothing else, I believe we are adjourned at ten oh five PM. That's all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Now.